Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And we will start with comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. Yes, Jerry.
[inaudible] So I think the students may have already taken it. First question, just want to know how many members of the board have taken some of the Practice SBAC exams online? The Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium exams. Just want to know if any of you have taken those exams online?
Speaking for myself, no.
I have that.
Okay, nobody? Good. Second question, I just don't know, how many members of the adult school board members have actually taught a classroom of students either in the public schools or at a university level? I just don't know. Two? Okay, those are my two questions. Thanks.
Thanks. Other comments from the public? Yes.
Yeah, I have something I want to present. Should I sit somewhere?
You can come right up here, Jimmy.
Okay, thanks. So, in the past, I've come here to talk about the F-35. I have a new idea for you on that subject because the F-35 is harming children, particularly in this Chamberlain School neighborhood. And here's something the, this school board can do and should do under its mandatory reporter role to protect children. Ask the state's attorney or the attorney general to investigate the assault on children at Chamberlain School from the F-35 noise that they're enduring. In their remarks about the F-35, as you probably know, the governor and several other Vermont political and military leaders never mention injury to children walking to Chamberlain School or playing outside during recess from its blasting noise. They never mention distress, anxiety, pain, learning impairment, and injuries to the ears and brains children are enduring. Even though these impairments and injuries were described in detail by the United States Air Force in the two volumes of its environmental impact statement. So what our governor and other political and military leaders do instead is mention economic benefits from the F-35, and thus, they admit to a motive. And that admission is actually helpful toward making the case for a criminal assault on children. Just like aiming a weapon at a target is not a crime, so basing F-35 jets several miles away from people would not be a crime. For the weapon to be a crime would have to threaten a person with that weapon. Similarly, for the F-35 to be a crime, it has to be based so close to people that its intense noise will threaten them, cause fear, distress, anxiety, damage, impairment, pain, or injury. And that is what makes this basing an assault on children. The Air Force admits that 6,663 people are living in the oval-shaped zone around the runway where these injuries and impairments will happen. And numbers in the Air Force study indicate that about 1,300 of those people are children. It isn't me saying that learning is impaired and that hearing is damaged, it's the Air Force. The Air Force admitted the noise level and that that level of noise can injure hearing and impair learning. And then, that was in 2013, and then in 2015, a study came out that goes further describing injuries to other bodily organs, from exposure, from repeated exposure to such high-intensity, low-frequency noise as is emitted by the F-35. If this was not the military doing it, the facts of such widespread injury to children for economic gain would normally be enough for an impartial and independent prosecutor to find probable cause to believe that an assault is being committed and to indict the perpetrators. But in this case, it's the military and high-level government officials who are responsible for this, for the assault. Fortunately, we live in a country where we pledge that we have justice for all. And those are the last three words of the pledge. Where equal justice under law is inscribed above the door of the U.S. Supreme Court. Where the idea that no one is above the law is taken seriously. So we owe it to the children to test whether this is really true. I urge members of this school board, as part of your mandated reporter responsibility to protect children, to request that the state's attorney or the attorney general review the facts provided by the Air Force showing an assault on children and take action to stop it. Because the Vermont National Guard is a state agency, and that these planes are being operated under authority of the governor and the state until they're called up for federal service, which they're not very often called up. It's easy for the state attorney or the attorney general to tell the governor, hey, you have to stop the flights in the Chamberlain School neighborhood because it's illegal. It's hurting people. You can't hurt people without violating the law. So, and this, so this school board, I'm just finishing now.
We do have an agenda item on Chamberlain School a little bit further down.
Oh, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Yes.
I just have a quick question, most of mine is in the budget, but I emailed you all, but about what is going to happen now to help grade three at Central School. One class is at 25, there's five more kids moving in next week. The classrooms are small. And I think we need to really think about maybe helping Mr. Kuhn allocate sources. And I think that's bigger than just Central School, and it really needs to be coming from David and the board. Because we've been promised a lot of ideas, and we have kindergarten, we have kindergartens with 15 kids in their class, and I love kindergarten, and I think they need a lot of support. But I really think that some of the paras in kindergarten could possibly be moved to grade three. It's not only just looking at the numbers, it's the needs. It's not just special education needs, it's human needs. Just people having a lot of disturbing behaviors that are not getting any sped services. And so those kids are in these really tight classrooms. I mean, one classroom, the one my daughter's in with 23 students, actually 24 now, is there's not even a room for another table. They've already taken a closet out, they've really tried to make the space conducive for learning. So I think something really needs to be done about that now, and maybe that means totally changing your budget in terms of what will look like for next year. Because we have a lot of project room spaces, which I think are sometimes dead spaces, and often some teachers use them in really effective ways, but a lot of times they're not. They're little sped hit-off areas where just kids get dumped. And maybe those walls get taken out and we move some stuff to make some larger classrooms. But we really need three paras either moved and/or hired in each of those grade three classrooms. Because the behaviors and their little kids are just slipping through the cracks right now. And so I guarantee those MCAS or whatever the S-FAC scores will be next year come that time, because they're not getting what they need.
Thank you for your email communication to the board. Do you want to respond, David?
Sure, thanks, Erin. So Brent Kuhn has been keeping me informed on a regular basis, and so we are in the process of figuring that out. And when I say, I don't want to make that sound like we're delaying, but there are some plans currently coming in around how we'll do this. It's not as easy just to add another classroom teacher and then make another class, because then kids have created. So how do we provide the right level of support to ensure that both the social and emotional needs, as well as the academic needs are being met? So we have some ideas. I may put some of that in play with him sooner rather than later on a temporary basis and bring back to the board. We have a board meeting next week, but it's primarily on budget and bond, as this one is. But on the 20, is that right? The 22nd board meeting will be to affirm kind of that, that piece. So we hear you loud and clear. We got, you got some great things going on at Rick Marcot. People want to move in into our community. We've had an uptick these last few days, or last week and a half, actually, we've had it through Rick Marcot, the middle school, and the high school have seen some pretty significant upticks in the last two, two and a half weeks.
One thing that concerns me is that we do this, now we're doing the special ed, where like there's one special educator for each grade, and I actually think that's causing haves and have-nots. So if you have a grade level with 45 kids, and then there's one with 67, you know, their caseloads are different. And maybe even just a little bit of that one special educator's time could just be taken to go into the classroom during some really poor academic time in another grade. Because I think it's clearly grades one and three, I don't know what was happening in those years, I have kids in those years too, but I see it at Orchard too. I mean, they have like a huge influx in grades one and three, just as we do. And I, I mean, something really should be just put in place, if it's nothing else, then, you know, even encouraging to get more student teachers. I mean, it's something, we need bodies.
Yeah, so again, I appreciate your advocacy, you and others, that's awesome. I mean, we also want the best environment for the students too. And we do have to handle kind of the ebb and flow of enrollment, usually on the upward side. And we're in the process of doing that. I think you'll see and hear from Brent pretty soon around kind of how we're going to move forward.
Second is looking at next year. And so part of what's in the budget, which we're going to talk about tonight, is that we do have additional teacher proposed into that particular grade for next year, and as well as a contingent teacher, because of the, kind of the uncertainty with enrollment right now. And that's true at both adding a teacher at Chamberlain, adding a teacher at Rick Marcot, having an additional contingent at Rick Marcot, and a contingent at Orchard. So, again, these are, these are things we need to work through, but they're also positive things around people wanting to live and be educate, have their children educated in South Burlington. So, again, I appreciate your advocacy, we're on it, and I'm happy to respond if you have other questions too. Yeah.
Sorry, I'm here for the same reason. I have children again in grades one and three. And I hear you, but I, when I initially talked to Brent about this, this was two weeks before break, and he was working on a proposal then. So we're now, you know, three school weeks passed, but five weeks passed, and nothing's occurred. So I know you say you're working on it, and it's coming, and it's something temporary, but what timeframe is this? Because, I mean, time's at the essence, when my child's getting another kid again on Thursday in a different class in Aaron's, and that's going to be 24 in that classroom, or 23 in that classroom, the other one has 25. They're all at maximum capacity with zero space. And so I just, I'm curious as to what the timeline would be for that.
Yeah, I'm happy, I mean, I'm not, we're not dragging, we're trying to really make sure and understand the numbers.
No, and I, yeah, I appreciate that.
What I also sometimes get, and this is no, no hit on administrators, because I've had administrators in the room at the moment, but, you know, sometimes they do get calls and say, you know, I got a, I've got five or six kids coming, they get another call, I've got another family coming in, and what they'll report back up to me is that we've got, you know, I got eight new kids coming in. I'm like, well, some of that, we need to make sure they get registered, paperwork gets filled out. Because there is a fair amount of inquiry sometimes that does that. And so we're really trying to make sure that we get paperwork into the system, in this case, it's into our power school system, and we can make sure that we have the information. Because we also have to be careful that we aren't taking individuals from other communities without, without the right process in place. So, that said, we have had kind of a continual increase. We still have some that are out there pending right now that haven't yet filled out all of the paperwork, that we're kind of counting but yet waiting. So, bottom line is, the numbers in that grade are in need, and we're going to try to respond, and I'm going to say, within the next, probably by early next week, try to respond to, could be an iterative process, but we want to respond.
Right, and I appreciate that. I thought that those teachers are at a dire stress level right now.
Yes, I was over there yesterday. I was over there yesterday talking with staff, and that's true.
That's true. Other comments from the public on items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Any amendments to the agenda, David?
Yeah, I'm going to take off under the superintendent's report, the professional development days. We'll be coming back to the board on the 22nd with a little, some data and report on that. So I'm taking that one off.
All right, we'll move to announcements and student rep report. Cole Delaney?
So, this Friday's super busy. It's going to be TLC, TLC day for all schools, and at the high school, it's going to be the end of quarter two and semester one. Monday will be the beginning of semester two. Winter Ball is also this Friday at the Hilton at Burlington. Do you want to take some more?
Sure. Um, the SBHS music Christmas tree pickup was a huge success. The music department raised over $11,000. Yep. Then, at the middle school, the FHTMS Play 12th Night was performed to title students today, and they will perform to the second half of the school tomorrow. And public performances will be this Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM.
There was a, there were actually two mental health awareness games this Monday and Tuesday, which I've spoken. And the Mental Health Awareness Club was accepting donations and charging, charging people half-price tickets. And we collected $890, and we will be donating those to local mental health organizations. And South Burlington High School is holding a food drive for the new food shelf, and we're collecting them through advisories.
And then Chamberlain received two $500 grants to purchase multicultural books and ukuleles from the Vermont NEA. And then, also, our, at Chamberlain, our PBIS team is organizing a community dinner at Chamberlain School this Friday, January 10th, from 6:30 to 7:30 PM, sponsored by Olive Garden. We will be offering a free dinner, pasta, sauce, breadsticks, and salad, to 90 family slash community members. This will be an opportunity to enjoy a meal and good conversation with our wonderful community families and friends. Make sure you sign up, ah, make sure you sign up each member of your party. There is room for 90 people to attend. If it fills up and you weren't able to sign up for this event, email Ms. Finn Lason, sorry for mispronunciations, so that you can be the first to be added to the fam, to the next family dinner. Mark your calendars for this fun, family-friendly event. And that is all.
I'll add one more. The Chamberlain School also received a donation for those that are, have a debt in the hot lunch program, somewhere around the $2,500 range, and then a $200 additional donation was also provided to help pay off those, or to pay off those that are in debt and have a little money there. So again, that family, again, I'm very appreciative of that.
Do we have other debts at other elementary schools?
Yes.
I saw the article that was great.
Yes.
Is there, I mean, is there awareness to the community on that, just to kind of promote that?
It's a sensitive, it's a sensitive issue, I would say. I don't, I don't know of any additional conversations about it. We, as a, as a school district and board, have wrestled with sometimes those, the amount of debt that we have sometimes, in trying to support the nutrition service program and, and figuring that out. We do have folks that are respectful and diligent to try to help mitigate that, but yes, we do.
Any other announcements? Great, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the city and school collaboration.
So, I'll just do a quick update. Elizabeth and I met with the city, that is Kevin Dorn and Helen Reilly, on the 20th of December. The topics that we, we had identified were talking about the school noise grant, we wanted to get some feedback from them, we talked about the master planning and visioning, we talked about some legislative issues, specific lead testing, school construction, looking for some support there, and feedback that they might have. We talked a little bit about our budget status, both city and school. We asked about reappraisal when that was happening, we also asked about perhaps reactivating impact fee. And given the growth that we're seeing, as we were just talking about a moment ago, whether or not impact fees should be reactivated. So we have some ongoing things going with that, those were our big topics. I will circle back and talk a little bit more about the Chamberlain Noise Grant, because Kevin Dorn, the city manager, did talk to us about putting out an email to the airport leadership, specific to some ideas around getting the 10%, possibly the 10% match on the grant. And I'll update a little bit when we get there. I don't know, other thoughts and things that came back?
The only other area that came up was the TIF funding that it, the, you may know more about this, Martin, but that the TIF funding mechanism is being challenged, I think, in terms of, I can't articulate it as well as, but that, that the city is going to be very involved in understanding the potential impact of that, and I'm not sure if you can add to that or not.
TIF is tax increment financing. I'm not going to go into any detail, but that's, that's, again, thank you, Elizabeth, for bringing that up. It's an item they had.
I don't think I know what impact these are, what's, what's that worth?
So, impact fees, can't remember exactly when they went away, certainly during Elizabeth's time on the board.
Probably about seven or eight years ago, I think.
Yeah, and so they used to be in place for when a development was, was being built, then the developer had to pay an impact fee that came into the city for city water, public works, you know, and schools. That still is in place for some of the infrastructure related to public works, I don't know all of them, but it's not in play. We stopped it as a result of flat growth, you know, in the city relative to students coming into the schools. So, we, I, we've been asking this for a period of time about when, what triggers the reactivation of that? Is there a number, or is it just that we have uptick? Does it have to be so many years? So, Kevin asked, said he would look into it with us, and we'll have that back on our agenda again. But we, we think, again, it would help in the past, I don't know, Anna, do you probably remember what we used it for? Maybe not, but we would use it to defer and support things that we needed to do. So if it was sections that were needed at the high school, or, or things within our elementary or middle school, those would be things, would, that's where that money would come from, specific to growth-related matters.
David? Thanks.
Anything else on city-school collaboration? All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
So, Rick Marcot, just give you a quick update, I'm going to let Gary do that, on 180 Market. As you know, there's a lot of activity going on there, although the road is open, and I think it's being well utilized, 180 Market, or Market Street, that is. But Gary can give you an update.
Yes, the, the project is going along pretty much on schedule. The construction company has been very responsive, they did some work to smooth and improve the conditions of the new entrance road recently. We haven't heard any negative impact from the pilings that are being driven now. They did give us plenty of notice that that was going to happen. Brent Kuhn has been informed and pretty communicative the whole way, so, so I think it's going pretty well. The only other thing that we're working through relative to that, our portion of that project, is some landscaping adjustment that's being proposed by the city. And we will keep you informed on how that develops. Just, it's just tree placement. We have a few concerns about some line of sight issues, so we're working with the city to, to maybe adjust those.
And Gary, did we get the lighting issue addressed that was of concern?
So, I, I don't know, I discussed that lighting issue with both our facilities folks and the, and the construction company. And I was told that those lights would be, would be back up, and I have not checked this week to see if they are.
Thank you, Gary. Lead testing, I'm going to let Gary cover this one too.
I'll keep going.
Again, this is a topic I think a lot of folks have been hearing about, probably in news throughout Vermont.
So we have, we have completed all the fixture replacement at each of the elementary schools. They are in the flushing process now, which takes three weeks. We have to flush those twice a day for a few minutes, we're, we're using five minutes to make sure we're covering, covering that. So we're flushing those over the next three weeks. Now that we have finished the fixture replacement, those test kits to retest those are on the way, they'll be here between one and two weeks from now. In two to three weeks from now, we'll start the retesting of those fixtures. As soon as those results come back, as long as they're below four parts per billion on both the first and the flush draws, we can start using the fixtures again for consumption. The middle school has one fixture left to replace, and the high school, I think, has two fixtures left to replace. As soon as that's done, the same process will start. We will flush all the fixtures for three weeks, retest, and then begin to use again. So that's where we are with lead testing.
I just have a question. So I know, like, I haven't really seen any, like, any of the water shut off in, like, certain areas. Have, like, those fixtures been shut, I just haven't seen them.
All the fixtures that tested above were shut off the day that we got the test results.
Was that any, like, specific, specific, like, high-traffic area, like places, like water fountains?
They weren't, they were not, except for one exception at the high school, which was upstairs, it's a very old-type water fountain. And anecdotally, we hear from the people in proximity to that fixture that it was hardly ever used. Water didn't come out very fast, from what I was told.
Thank you, Gary. So the next item is just the update on the Juul litigation. I informed the board last time that I signed on to that, that claim, and there were some questions that came out. And so these are just some responses from legal counsel related to, to some of the questions were, that were asked. And so, number of firms, there's three form, three firms that were listed involved in, in this particular dispute. It's specific to Juul because they have demonstrated history to support the claim. There's no financial exposure to the district. Obviously, the decision about me signing or not, obviously, the board certainly could, if they so desire, we certainly can withdraw from that at any time. Again, the lawyer indicates that it may take about 10 hours of staff time. I'm not sure about the per year, I would ask a little bit more about, is that like an ongoing thing? That would be a question that I would have back to him, which I've not asked. And then the damages would be based on the resources expended by the district involved and, and the costs of the remediation of the programs and counseling for students. So, again, it's really up to the board. I felt like this was something that we're definitely seeing some pretty concerning outcomes related to student behaviors, and we think that the dual language ought to get figured out. So, again, I'm open to whichever way you want to do that. You don't necessarily need to make a decision now, but, again, this is information, you may want more.
Thanks, Delaney. On number six, the last one, where it says the damages would be based on the resources expended by the districts involved and the cost of remediation, it seems like that is a way-too-narrow focus for a lawsuit against, well, I don't know if you refer to, well, I'll just call it Juul. It's not just the district that's being exposed by this, not just by having to deal with discipline issues and, I don't know what else, but the, the financial and the damage is being done to the kid who get addicted to it, and it's going to be experienced long after they graduate. And it's going, it's going to affect their careers, it's going to affect their health, obviously, that, you might be able to put a, easily more put a financial price tag on. But I, I just, I think the damage is-
I'm not really, I'm not really interested in getting into the weeds particularly on this. I mean, we've signed on as supporter in that. What's happening to students that are involved in the utilization of Juul, of the Juul, is disadvantageous to them. As far as, you know, how the damages would go and all of that, I'm not necessarily, I don't desire to get into the weeds on that. I would just like to have attention focused on what's right for kids, and make sure that whatever, if it's not good, then it stops, you know?
Yeah.
That's really my desire, that was really the intent of my, my signing on to it as a larger party of advocates to try to bring about that change. If there are additional details or uncomfortableness, you know, I, I may decide personally just to pull it and let the board then make, take their own action.
I'm in favor of it.
I, I still do not understand what we signed on to. I, that was the fundamental, I mean, the questions aren't included here, so I don't, I can't even evaluate the responses relative to the questions, the chronology here of questions. Yeah, it, it, there's still, the questions that were asked is- Yeah, it, there, there's still, the questions that were asked is who retained the firms? And that question is not answered, in my opinion.
Yeah, it's the three firms, and they're listed in the, in the, in the resources.
But it doesn't say who retained them. The second question was that it, should it be brand-neutral, and wondered why it was specific to Juul? As a client, do we have any financial exposure? And it says none on answer three, but it sounds like there's 10 hours of staff time. Maybe that's the lawyer staff, I'm not sure.
Well, I wonder if number six addressed that?
Yeah.
When it talks about damage is based on resources expended, is that meant to recompense for district staff time? That would make sense, but I don't know.
Yeah, and it, I guess those are not linked with me. And then asked, we asked if it was consistent with policy governance, and I guess that's answer number two. It's question number four, but answer, I'm sorry, this is a gray area, this, yeah, I, I guess I still do not have an understanding.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, I have no problem. I, I am not willing to expend a lot of resources on this. I mean, I felt like this was an advocacy thing solely on Juul. I'm not interested in, in putting a lot of your time or my time into this. It was an advocacy thing that was being supported by, again, retained law firms, and a lot of my fellow colleagues have signed on. So, but I'm not, again, I think there's enough advocacy to try to advocate appropriately for a student, for student positive outcomes, so I'm not, I'm really not interested in, in pursuing it. So I'm gonna suggest that we both...
Well, and I'm, I'm not saying it isn't of value to pursue, but I'm, I, I think the fundamental question is who retained the firms and what is the expected outcome?
Yeah, no, I'm not...
And if there was some specificity around, there will be additional education for students around vaping, or there, I guess that's what I don't understand yet.
Yeah, I'm sure that the, the money that would come back, I don't know how much that would come back, would go back into making sure that there is education and resources to ensure that that happens. Again, I think from my perspective, it was really to try to get it to just, to get, to get some attention to the, to the wrongness of what's happening, and to hopefully create that advocacy. So, again, I'm, I'm happy to do whatever you want, but at this point, I'm kind of like, you know, I don't have a lot of additional time to, to go, and, again, I wanted to be transparent with you that I had signed on to it. I appreciate your feedback, but, again, I think I, I can go back and I can talk to you a little bit more about maybe some next steps. I'll be, pull it, or answer some, or have some of the legal folks come in.
It doesn't seem, the only harm by being in this is, is the staff time is about my only concern. And that may not be a big issue if I had any understanding of what, what these firms were really after, and what chance there is of actually getting some compensation for having to have dealt with this Juul epidemic in our schools. I mean, I think it's worth doing that. But again, my only concern is just that those 10 hours, and maybe that's a good investment.
Again, I feel like I'm dense on this. I don't know what we're doing, or even what we're advocating for.
Well, it'd be nice to see the, like, I mean, is there a complaint?
Yeah, I handed it out to him.
Well, we had, we had the handout, but it was not clear in there, which is why...
Well, that was, that was just the, I mean, have they filed the lawsuit?
Yeah, it's really what we had was a client representation agreement, which had the backgrounds of that, and that's what I particularly read that affirmed for me that it made sense to sign on to it. And again, I didn't feel that there was any particular risk to the district in doing so. It was simply signing on to an agreement to have that.
Who are the firms, again?
It's listed, I'll give it to you. But I think we should move on, and I'm happy to talk with you, Elizabeth, about, you know, next steps, but we have a lot of things on our agenda today.
Well, in terms of what we're seeking, I don't know, the second part of number six seems to suggest that we're seeking money to, for prevention and cessation programs, right? I mean, again, I don't know, but that's what it sounds like.
I don't know. It should be very clear to me, but I'm willing to table it, and we can take it offline. Yeah, it, it's just not fundamentally clear, and that's all.
Fair.
Okay. Any, any other comments, questions? All right, we'll move on to agenda item eight, Chamberlain's School Noise Mitigation and Airport.
So we have two things here. Again, wanted to update you on kind of the impact on health, student health and learning, and then two contingency plan for Chamberlain's School. These were, kind of came out of the last board meeting around some questions that were coming up. So, in response to the student health and learning, a couple of things that I think are important for the board, and through active communication with, with Holly, we're all the principal, we continue to ask whether or not we're, you know, are there any noticeable things happening from the teacher's perspective, staff, specific to the students around current noise levels? The response has been no. We have had one concern or complaint that you know, are aware of. We're going to continue to do that. We, at the present time, Gary Marques and I have inquired, and we'll bring this back to the board on the 22nd, but we've inquired with ATC, what I'm wanting to suggest, and we've had this kind of plan for some time, but we'll bring back the same level of testing that we did back when, when ATC did it with the F-16. We'll do it both inside and outside, that same kind of measurement, to, at the time when the F-35 is flying, so we'll have some comparable data. That will be some resources, you'll, you'll be able to make a decision on that. We think that's important to kind of get a benchmark around what's happening from the perspective of the F-35. As far as the contingency plan, I addressed this a little bit earlier when I talked, when Elizabeth and I talked about the city meeting, and Kevin Dorn indicated to us that he was gonna write to Nick Lugo and Gene Richards at the airport, airport management, which he did. He did that back in January 3rd, and he is specifically asking about, there's this thermal efficiency program through Vermont Gas that apparently he, he believes and thinks that they've also been in contact with the airport or vice versa around providing the local match related to folks that are located within the 65 decibel area. So, I haven't heard a response back yet. I asked Kevin again. He, he's still waiting for a note to come back from Gene and Nick, and so we'll be, I'll be looking for that. In addition, we, you know, we're continuing to working with legal counsel around some of those next steps. We think this is, again, trying to get the, the grant moving. We think having the assessment of kind of current realities and continuing to monitor current situations at, at the school. So, that's the brief update on Chamberlain.
We've, we've had this discussion in the past, but do we have a dedicated school nurses at each of the elementary facilities?
Yes, we have school nurses at each.
And is hearing and vision testing still mandated?
It is, and actually, it was legislated at the high school this past year to do, to do hearing, although no money came with that. But we were required to do the, the hearing assessments for, I forget what grade, Patrick, 11th? 11th through 12th? 11th? Yeah, 11th and 12th. So yes, we do, we do it at the elementary, hearing and vision testing.
Every, every year, correct?
Every year. Mm-hmm.
Is, because I'm, I mean, I think we've had this conversation about, there may be other data available to us to sort of assess any trends or any comparability between other elementary schools. I just wonder, again, without violating any HIPAA regulations or anything, are, are some of those data relevant to kind of assessing a baseline between schools, for instance?
Yeah, we can, it's a, that's a good marker, too, to look at, you know, what are the, what are the hearing measurements at, at our three elementaries, or just look at if there's any significant trends there? I don't know, we could...
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to add more work, but I, those are data that I think are standardized between the elementary.
The hard part with that is, I mean, it's not 100%, right? Who comes and goes, who may, you know, so it's, it's a little bit, but it could be a, a marker. We do think it would be important for us to do some follow-up assessments, since we did it before. Again, it's nice that we have some baseline, or what we'll call F-16 baseline, and to be able to do it again with F-35 baseline in the same methodology that we did before.
That makes sense, for sure.
You know? So we'll bring that back to you on the 22nd. Gary's been working just, you know, he's been working overtime just to get, get some of that stuff done, but we'll bring it back on the 22nd.
So that'd be about, probably the same time of year that we do the testing?
I don't, I don't remember when we did it last time.
I did it in the spring, and it was basically on that shoulder season where we were not sure if we're gonna be able to have the windows open or not. So I want to say it was like late March, early April, trying to decide whether it was warm enough.
So we'll, we'll, again, part of this is to get that approved, and then we'll, we'll figure out when we would do it. Same methodology would, would apply, obviously, you know, that we did before, so that it's comparable data. Again, this is mostly for us, in our, in our work to support a positive learning environment. Obviously, we think it would be useful to the FAA, to our claim, et cetera, if we need to, but, again, this is just part of our, I think, need for due diligence.
And I just wanted to understand a little better. You're checking with Holly, is she having regular check-ins with the teachers to see if they are noticing stuff with the students, or how is that working?
Yeah, so she's, again, this is a, this is an area of concern, obviously, so she's just making sure that that's part of the normal, the normal ask, how are things going? Anything specific to the, to noise, you know? I'm not wanting to say she's doing it, you know, every day, but it's a regular check-in.
Okay.
All right. We'll move on to ends in action, agenda number nine.
Yeah, so Mike Martin is here, our director of learning, and again, this is, you know, kudos to him around coming on. We, we know that the board, you don't get a lot of opportunity to really be able to see kind of either are any of our ends, our academic disposition, personal development, or citizenship actually be deployed. So this is not a monitoring exercise, this is just a little dipstick of ends in action. So some of the stuff that our students are doing in one of our areas of our ends, and so here tonight, Mike is, we'll, we'll kick it off, and we are trying to stay to kind of that 10, 15-minute piece, but we do have students here, and we're really happy about that.
Right on. So, I'm pleased to share that we have some incredible student leaders here tonight. Their teachers will come with them, too, and we're really excited about the work they've been doing, both in their school and in the wider community, and we just thought it was a beautiful example of our citizenship and inaction. So, I don't want to give a long introduction, I want to have the students come right up here, so I'll invite the students to come up at this time. Thanks.
Do we have enough chairs?
We can give you some more.
Welcome.
So, my name is Deng Agwak, as you see up there. I use he/him pronouns. My name is Vernique Shaban, I use she/her pronouns.
My name is Sten Woodward, and I use he/him pronouns.
All right. What does a weekly meeting look like? We meet up on the cafeteria. We average 45 to 60 members. We circle up and... Thank you.
We want to make sure we hear you guys.
All right. And we review the agreements. And you want to name agreements?
We do tell you truth, expect and, and expect and accept non-closure, stay on task, and...
Is that it?
Yeah, I think so.
And we, there's a lesson, and we do project, sorry, project groups. Sometimes there are special guests who speak to us about their experiences, or they teach us something. And then there's a closing at the end where we all get together and talk about what we did in the project group, or we ask questions to our special guest.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. That's what we do in the beginning of every meeting, so.
Next.
One thing that we've done in the community is during Black History Month, we made posters and organized a book wall in the back over here with all sorts of books that related to this topic.
We also did, like, non-violent action with this last year and this year. We hold up posters in between periods, so when people walk by, they can read them, just a reminder.
So, we got, like, in this picture, we got pretty cool t-shirts, but we get, like, grants, and we are able to perform, or not really perform, present and work with people at different conferences. Personally, I've been to two and presented at two, one at Champlain College and another at UVM. They were called Dynamic Landscapes in the Roland Foundation. Thank you.
This is when we were going to a place near the state building, and we were doing our Dynamic Landscapes Vermont Schools Against Racism and Equality Summit, if I remember correctly. And we also went to a Roland conference. It was a middle grades conference and about beyond bullying.
We also did, like, in the beginning of the year, we did a Selma screening. SOAR hosted it at the high school auditorium, and it was a really great movie, but not a lot of people came, just very few people.
Oh, well, we had a first-come, first-served basis, so we had 48 students who came to Ms. Nold's classroom on a set day to sign up to go to the Flynn to see John Lewis. And I personally went there, and I really enjoyed it there. It was really cool seeing a national figure in front of my eyes. And here's a quote from one of my classmates, Jordan. "One of the things I really admired was that John Lewis really desired to make a change. He had, he had a huge urge to make a difference." And she's a seventh grader.
We'll, we will also like to thank, to thank the administrators, or teachers, or families, the Terran Institute for Innovate, Innovative Education, Teaching Tolerance, the South Burlington Community.
We went to the raising of the Black Lives Matter flag at the South Burlington High School, and what next refers to a couple of things we're working on right now, like we're trying to get the Black Lives Matter flag raised here in the middle school, and Paint and Mural and a bunch of other projects are currently happening.
This is just a quote from Desmond Tutu. "If you are natural in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor."
Any questions or comments?
Did you come up with the acronym SOAR, or is that a national?
I'm pretty sure we came up with that acronym.
You did come up with it?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Could you tell me a little bit more about what, some of those activities? You mentioned just the activities, but what, what do they entail when you have that meeting with the 45 to 60 people?
Oh, like, we all get together.
Yeah, what, yeah, if you explain what that is, I'm not sure I know what that...
SOAR, we usually have, like, one of our leaders, the teachers, say something, like, either it's a lesson where we're taught, like, things, we learn the, what to say, if there are any moments where people are saying racist stuff, or like homophobic sexual, sexist stuff, and we learned how to combat that. And recently, we've been doing project groups, so it's just like a quick meetup, and then we split up into the project groups, and we just go on from there. And I feel like it's a really student-led thing, and I really enjoy that part about it.
Has there been interaction between SOAR and the Student Justice Union at the high school?
Yeah.
Any collaborative events?
Well, we've had Student Justice Union students come to our meetings. Well, we've had Student Justice Union students come to our meetings and tell us about their experience in the high school and how, um, they like are excited for us to come up. And, um, I think I'll be a part of that in the future. And, yeah, they just talk to us. I don't think we've worked, collaborated, like on a project together, but we were both at the Roland Conference at the same time.
Any other board questions?
So I wanna add to that and thank our students here for doing such a wonderful job. You did an awesome job. I do wanna mention also that they were at UVM. They had very difficult conversations. They gave presentations that I was at. And I couldn't have been any prouder of our students. They did a fantastic job. And I have to say, they navigated very difficult conversations and also basically worked with the adults, worked with older students, which must have been very difficult for them to do and did a fantastic job doing so. So I was very proud of them. One thing I did wanna mention also, you know, acknowledge our advisors because they really deserve the credit here. You know, Kristi Nold is the one who pretty much started this along with Gary Russell. We do have Jeff Novak also in the audience and Carol McNair, who has also been attending and is also one of the co-advisors. You know, and then the other thing, I wasn't quite sure if it was clear, but SOAR stands for Students Organized Against Racism. So just wanted to make sure. But again, thank you very much and thank you for having our students here. They do a wonderful job.
So actually, again, yes, thank you. The faculty board also has some additional pieces that I just wanted to make you aware of. And there are two opportunities, turning one, one another, South Burlington Community Dinner Series Equity and Dialogue Series. And the first one, again, Suzie Merrick has pulled these together for us. It's January twenty-third, five-thirty to six is dinner and then the event is six to seven. And again, the topic is how to start the conversation about race with children. And then the other one is in February, February twentieth. And again, it is Jazz and Friends Event, again, specific to dealing with this particular, these issues. So again, I wanna just make sure that's, that's available. We're not doing too, too bad on time. Thanks again to Mike Martin for helping to organize that and great job, students.
Okay, we all set?
Mm-hmm.
All right, as we transition here, we'll move to Agenda Item Ten, Master Planning and Visioning Update.
So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna...
I'd like to introduce, while Lee needs no introduction, he's a regular here at our meetings. Lee Door from Door and Wittery Architecture. And we have Adam, Adam Craig, who is our financial advisor and fiduciary, I might add, from Hilltop Securities of Lincoln, Rhode Island for, for our bonding and the financial aspect of the potential project.
So objective here is to run through kind of master planning and visioning. We have, we do have some pieces, some of you have seen this many times, some in the audience, obviously not. We'll, we'll walk you through that. We will have probably opportunity to look more on the financial side. And as Gary said, Adam can provide a little bit more insight. But we wanna kind of walk you through this. We know it may be redundant for some, but the hope is, is that folks that are seeing it for the first time will be able to kind of get up to speed. Again, this is a hope of us in master planning and visioning is to make sure we're, we're continuing to do this. There's been a fair amount of effort to try to make sure people are aware of where we are at. So thank you, Lee, thank you, Adam, thank you, Gary.
Great, thanks for having us tonight. Uh, we wanna cover some topics, hopefully some new information for you, certainly some information on cost that folks would be interested in. But we wanted to walk you through the process we've been working through over the last month, since our last update with you, and, and walk you through the cost estimates and the procedure we went through to look at some value engineering and kind of cost containment measures on the project. We have a project budget proposal overall to review. We have some tax impact information and we got some updated plans and building imagery to share. And a little quick discussion about next steps ahead of us. To talk about the cost estimates portion, um, back in September, as you guys all recall, we had developed, you guys had moved forward with Concept Five and asked us to develop that further. So we spent a lot of time meeting with staff and students and community members to develop the plan further. We developed a schematic design level plan and we produced a, a set of documents for estimating, which we provided to the design team's estimator. And the district also had hired PC Construction as an independent check on the cost estimate and the overall schedule. So we gave those documents to both parties at the same time. They both developed estimates independent of each other. We all got back together and we spent about fourteen hours stuck in a room together going through line items of estimates to make sure that we were all seeing the same thing in the drawings and understanding the approach to the project. So we've reconciled those estimates and then we went through a, a series of kind of line items of, of discussions that we've had with the working group on trying to set kind of priorities between wants and needs, what the project can afford, what changed from the last time we put an estimate together as we developed this project budget. So the first estimates that came back, and these were before reconciliation. So these were the raw estimates that came back independent of one each other. The design team construction estimate came back at about two hundred point three million dollars. PC Construction's estimate came back at one eighty-nine point five. There's about ten million dollars between them at that point, which was about five percent. And the construction estimate is just one part of a project budget. It's the construction estimate plus the soft costs. And I'll describe what soft costs are in a minute. But you add those two things together and that's where we come up with the project cost. So we went through the reconciliation process. As I mentioned, we spent a day working together to come through with that stuff. And we got much closer together by the end of it. We got to within a million dollars on a two hundred million dollar construction estimate, which was about point five percent. And at this level of design, that's really good. So we were comfortable that the estimators were understanding the scope of the project. The biggest variance is because they were about ten million dollars apart in the beginning. And I've kind of highlighted some of these here in yellow. But the biggest changes were the understanding of the mechanical systems that we were proposing for the project, some of the electrical systems. We had lots of discussion on finishes. As you can imagine, with a project that's not completely designed yet, there was lots of con, conversations about what was included kind of in the project scope. And special construction, that, that was the bulk of the difference between them. That's what we focused our efforts on, trying to get those closer together. So when those estimates came back, they were higher than what we wanted to be. And while we mentioned this before when we came to you, that two hundred and nine million dollar figure was an estimate based on what we knew at that time. We spent a lot of time trying to stay within that, but also we were testing through the schematic design process some of the goals we had for the project. So we designed some of that in, we priced it out to see what the prices came back in, and then we made some decisions. And with those decisions, we started looking at different buckets of areas to look for cost savings. And so the three major buckets we looked at were the overall square footage of the project, what we were doing with the scope on the site and the actual building design, and some of the sustainability measures, the energy efficiency that we were building into the scope of the project. The first bucket that we looked at trying to reduce was through our discussions with staff and students, the study program that we had developed had grown. Once we actually started listening to people and understanding what the needs were more specifically, some additional square footage was added into the project. What we're looking to do, and because the project is only about thirty percent in development, is we needed to massage that floor plan a little bit to get some more efficiency out of it. Some of the corridors are a little bit too wide. So we're looking at trimming about fifteen thousand square feet out of the project and not by impacting educational uses, but really just by making the layout more efficient through the design process. We did take some scope changes. We had proposed in the scope of work an elevated track at the middle school gym. We're suggesting that that be removed as a cost containment measure. We also had the square footage proposed for the new middle school gym was quite large and we thought it was more appropriate to scale that back so it's actually the same size as the current high school gym. So there'll be appropriate amount of seating involved in that and it just made it a little bit more efficient. When we actually did the layout for the auditorium, the theater, we actually had, the little box that we drew was too big for the amount of seats that we actually wanted from a program standpoint. So we're trimming back to what we desired, which was seven hundred and fifty seats and that saved some square footage. And we priced out putting in a geothermal system as part of the mechanical system for the project. And I'm gonna go into that in much more detail later. But the geothermal system has a series of pumps and equipment that needs room for it to live in and that had quite a bit of square footage that was added from the last time. So we're proposing reducing some of that. The next bucket we looked at was what can we do with the site and building design themselves to be able to look at trying to make that a little bit more cost-effective? So the original estimates included the construction of a new concession stand and new bathroom buildings. You would recently have invested in that as a community. So we priced out actually trying to salvage those, kind of pick them up and reuse them on the site. And so we're looking at, and in a couple of different instances, we're looking for the concession and the bathroom buildings. We wanna take the light poles from the field site lighting that's at the current stadium right now and be able to reuse that. We're gonna have to change the fixtures because codes have changed on that and the field dimensions will be a little bit different. But we also looked at, in the estimate, we had kind of designed from scratch some of the outbuildings on the site. And so when we take down the campus, we have to replace district maintenance buildings, you know, storage sheds for athletic equipment. So we're looking at trying to save some money by using pre-engineered structures for that because they'll certainly serve their function and it'll be much more cost-effective than designing and building those from scratch. The other piece that was considerable in, in the cost estimate was urban soils. And those are soils that are impacted by development. And you see that a lot in Jettinin County. And so we had done some preliminary testing a while back and we knew that they were present on the site in limited areas. Through this phase of the project, we've gone and done some more testing to quantify kind of the extent of that. And so we did that and we also worked out a way, the cost of that urban soil is the removal off-site. If you have to haul it, you know, up to Coventry, Vermont or some other site that's, has the ability to receive that, that's very expensive. You also have the ability to reuse that onsite and cap it after. And since we're moving lots of soil around on the site to balance it out, we found some opportunities where we can reuse that onsite and save that cost. Some of the other things we looked at were the ratios, the percentages on the exterior of the building and we'll show you some images of that, of the percentage of the building that's clad in brick versus some other type of material finish. And, you know, as we kind of rotate the dials on those ratios, it certainly has a cost, depending on the, the cost of the materials. So we're looking at making that a little bit different. The roof material, we originally had priced a built-up roof and we've looked at, you know, a comparable product, which is a thermoplastic roof, a TPO product that has a similar warranty, but it's a little bit more cost-effective. We're looking to make that change. And certainly with the finished materials within the building, you know, we went at it pretty aggressively in the cost estimate to try and understand what things would cost. And now we're gonna reel that back in to get, to get appropriate materials to be able to match the budget. The next piece of what we are looking at, and this is where we really kind of pressed the boundaries during this phase of the design, is we initially, back when we saw you guys earlier this summer, had established some goals for the efficiency and the operations of the building, sustainability overall. And we've built that into the estimates and we had previously, but we pushed those boundaries a little bit further in this phase to see what was possible. And so one of the things that we found out was we priced what it would take to have the district own a photovoltaic system, to be able to, you know, kind of use that behind the meter to get to a net zero energy project. And we found through some of the research that there's some changing things in the Vermont solar market right now with legislation that's coming up, some volatility in costs. So we looked at, you know, what would it be to have the district lease out roof space and have a third-party provider come in and provide that and lease that opportunity? So we've carried money in the budget for that because right now in Vermont, there's a cap on net metering of one megawatt. This project takes two to be able to fully provide power to the school. So we can't quite get there under the current legislation. So we've looked at different approaches to be able to get there. We have continued to design the building to be net zero energy-ready. In other words, it can accept more PV panels in the future and we've got the infrastructure built in to be able to do that. The building as it stands, we explored going a full geothermal system. And there was about a hundred and sixty wells to be able to support a building of this size and this system. And we priced that out and it was considerable. So we've scaled that back and I'm gonna circle back around to talk to us about that again at the end. The building is still gonna be designed, it's actually gonna be fossil-free. It's all electric. It's got electric boilers that are partially supported by the PV that we will be leasing on the roof. We've done lifecycle costing on this and this is definitely the least cost on capital investment and return on your investment on the operational savings. The ventilation system will be dehumidification. It's a displacement ventilation system. We've talked about this a little bit previously, but what we're really doing is we're taking intake ventilation air and we're taking the humidity out of that air as it comes into the building. So it's moisture-free when it's coming into the building, so it feels, it's almost like air conditioning light. And it's very cost-effective to do this and we've toured lots of building with folks to be able to understand what that's like. We also had priced triple-pane windows as part of this cost estimate round and we looked at some of the payback on that and we didn't think it was affecting the energy model quite enough to be able to carry that cost forward in the project. The insulation values, we played around with a lot on the cost and the energy model and we landed on, we're insulating the building to meet the stretch energy code. So what we're talking about in the building and the project that we're presenting is a highly efficient building. It's just we were testing how far we could go to get to net zero and I will come back and talk about that. So back to the two-step process here, we have construction costs, which I've talked about. And the next piece of this is soft costs. Soft costs are comprised of many different items. They cover the design and engineering fees, they have permitting costs. All of the furniture fixtures and equipment in the building, anything that's not nailed down to a floor or a wall will be outside of the construction firm's contract and we'll have to supply that, so we're carrying budgets for that. Same thing with technology, all the loose computers, TVs, projectors, all of that stuff, we're carrying a budget for that as well. There's clerk of the works and owner's project management costs in the budget to be able to oversee the project from the community's perspective. Legal line items, testing services during construction, we have to test all the materials as the project's being built. There'll be printing costs, there'll be moving expenses when we move from the old buildings into the new buildings. And we're carrying the owner's contingency also separately as a line item in this. So the overall budget that we're proposing, the reconciled construction estimate came in at a hundred and ninety-nine million dollars. The measures that we've taken in scope reduction came up to about twenty-five point five million, just underneath that. And so it gave us a revised construction cost estimate of a hundred and seventy-three point five million dollars. The soft cost budget is thirty-six and it gets us to a budget of two hundred and nine point five eight eight, pretty close to where we were. And we made some conscious decisions as the, the committee and the working group put together on how to be able to keep within these budget parameters. Turn it over to the experts for the, the good stuff.
Okay, next we'll, we'll talk a little bit about tax, the tax impact and their projections for this project. First, we'll talk a little bit about the assumptions that we use. These are, these are certainly estimates, there are very many variables involved in that. The calculations are based on the actual construction costs of two oh nine point five eight, eight million. They're also based on the FY twenty-one Vermont tax formula. So the budget that we're building right now, we're using the state tax formula that determines tax liability to calculate the potential impacts of the project over, over the current tax formula. So all amounts that are gonna be displayed in these are project impacts only. They are how much more the project will cost from a tax standpoint. Just to point out that roughly fifty percent of South Burlington taxpayers are income sensitized and there is a table that, in this analysis, that deals solely with people who pay taxes based on... And there is a table that, in this analysis, that deals solely with people who pay taxes based on their household income. Adam is here and he's going to talk a little bit about the borrowing schedule and how that was developed.
Thank you, Gary. Yeah, so obviously the, the component of this project and the reason that taxes will be increased is to pay back the bond. Bonds will be issued to finance this project. And then the debt service, which is principal and interest repayments going forward, will be built into the district's budget. So what we did is we took the project cost and Doran Whittier also gave us the projected expenditures over the life of the project, starting in 2020, going out through the fall of 2024. We needed to know the projected expenses and cash flow along the way so that we could make sure that the financings that the district did lined up with the cash flow needs. We don't want to borrow too early and waste interest payments. But we also, of course, want to make sure we borrow on time and have the money there so that all of the contractors can get paid. So based on the current estimates, which of course, as things are refined and as the plans are revised, will probably most likely shift a little. But based on the current projection, you can see that there are, there are four financings. One is a short-term note. So first we have a $10 million bond anticipation note. That's a nine-month note. And that is really to, to get the initial money on the table for the, to pay for design engineering in the beginning of the project. The second bond issue pays off, or the, the second financing is a $67 million bond issue. That's a 30-year bond issue. That pays off the $10 million note, so that goes away after nine months, and then provides another $57 million for construction. And then you can see a year later, right now, projected in January of 2022, we have the third financing, which is a $90 million bond issue. Again, that's for 30 years. And then finally, sometime in 2023, we have the final bond issue, which currently is projected at a little over $52.5 million. That last bond issue, the timing and the amount will obviously be three years into the project at that point. So that will help us, you know, determine that final amount. If things are running ahead of schedule and, and under budget for some reason, obviously, we would not issue the whole amount. We will only issue what's actually necessary. But of course, we won't go over the cap that's approved. So those are sort of the maximum numbers there that you would see. Right now, those interest rates that you see in parentheses, those are projections at this time. Obviously, there are some very important factors that affect interest rates. But at this time, those are the projections that we're working with and the numbers you'll see here tonight.
Can I get a clarification? Are we looking at aggregate interest costs or are we looking at the amount of a bond? Can you tell me how much the aggregate interest cost is with all these four bonds?
So, so right now, each one of those, that, that, the, the 3.5% goes with the 2021 bond. So you're beginning your statement is correct. So each bond issue, and basically what we're doing is we're building in, because rates are so low right now, we don't feel like it would be appropriate, obviously, to, to project each one going forward at current market rates because rates are so low. So we're being careful and we're adjusting the rates. So I could easily run a blended, a blended yield for you based on, on all three of those.
I just can't tell if each bond is rolling into the previous one.
No, they're all independent.
They're all independent?
Yes. So really, it's over 32 years, you know, because each one is for 30 years. We have one in '21, that is 30 years. So there's a 30-year, $67 million bond. The next year, we layer in another $90 million. So now we have 157 million outstanding.
So would these four bonds together be both principal and interest as a total project cost?
Those are the principal amounts issued in a minute when we talk about the tax impact. That includes principal and interest, all of the costs that would need to be repaid by the district.
Okay, so we will be able to get a figure of the total cost of the project, principal and interest as a whole. Okay, fine.
Yes.
And I think the 10 is rolled into the 67, right? I don't know if there's a difference in.
Right, that's correct. So if you add 67, 90 and 52, 588.
I saw that, but I didn't know about the other ones.
Yep.
You wouldn't have a copy of this, would you, for handouts?
This will be on the website as soon as tomorrow, probably. There is a copy of the, on the table over there, there's a copy of the tables that show property tax impact and income impact.
Right. I have a question on that, too. What you're showing for 2022 is the increase from the current tax level?
Correct.
These are all increments. So they, in 2023, if you're at 650, it's going from 1160, it's doubling to 2891 the next year.
Correct. They're not cumulative, though. They're independent years.
Right. But you're doubling the individual year and then it's tripling within three years.
That's correct.
Yeah, we are going to show that table, are we not?
We are going to show that table. It's very difficult to read and projected. That's why we have the handout. Okay, so, so finally, on this slide, so these calculations, they're not adjusted for factors that we say may, but will likely lower tax liability in the future. And, and those three factors that we can think of immediately are grand list growth, the projected, our projected increase in equalized pupils because of our increasing enrollment. And the, the citywide appraisal that's happening now should, will definitely result in, in an increase in the common level of appraisal percentage. So we're trying to be relatively conservative in, in our estimating of, of tax impacts. So, so we're, we're not getting into a situation where we're saying that impacts are, are this and then there, they become a lot more down the road. There's no way that this is an exact science based on all the, the variables in the Vermont tax formula and how they change on an annual basis. So we picked a point in time and did the best estimating that we could.
Gary, does the timing of the construction and soft costs adjust for inflation over the course of that four-year period?
Yes.
Did that happen in the cost estimation process?
So, so the sheet you have, and it's on the handout, and I can't even read it on, on mine. This first one is the property tax for those taxpayers not income sensitized who pay only based on their property valuation. So this is broken down in $50,000 increments from $100,000 to $800,000. The averages are, the 32-year average impact, average annual impact, is listed at the very bottom. And then again, there's a listing of the assumptions that we used to provide these estimates. The second handout is based on income sensitivity. Those payments are based, those are for people who, whose household incomes are less than $136,500. And that, that figure, that cap is adjusted by legislative action on an annual basis. But for, if you file with your taxes a homestead declaration, you are eligible to pay your education portion of your taxes based on, on your income, on your household income. So this table shows annual impacts in $10,000 increments from $30,000 in income up to $136,500. Now, Jerry Silverstein pointed out that there is a maximum benefit that the, the state has set. And that is, I think, $5,600 if, if, if the figure that Jerry provided was correct. Maximum reduction benefit of $5,600 annually. I will, I will, I will look that up and verify.
That's on income. There's another benefit that the state offers on top of income sensitivity. Once you go below $47,000 of income, then the state offers you another benefit to offset the cost. So the $5,600 I quoted was for people who are eligible for income sensitivity. They would have less than $136,000, but more than $47,000. If they're less than $47,000, they get another benefit from the state on top of the income sensitivity, just so that we're all on same page.
Excellent. Thanks. Thanks for that. So these are the, these are the two tables to give, give our best estimate at this point in time of the impact that this project will have on South Burlington taxpayers.
So these next slides are to depict on where all that is going. And, and some of you guys have seen these before and I'll quickly walk through the, the big ticket items on each of these slides. But the site plan, just to orient people, at the bottom of the screen is Dorset Street, Kennedy Drive. The existing high school sits right in here and the existing middle school sits right in here. As you know, we're proposing new construction around the back of the building. This is the varsity baseball field now. This is the outdoor track. Right at the edge of the track, if you walked out there, you'll see that the slope actually drops down to the field that's down there that the students call the pit. It's about a 12-foot differential. And we've tried to take advantage of that by putting the athletic center a floor lower than the, the initial floor of the school. So it's kind of sits down in that. So you walk into it at the second floor level, looking down into the field house. The big things here is, there is this main entry drive here is primarily for bus drop-off. There's a separate entry over here for parent drop-off for both middle school and high school students. As you can see, we've spread parking out around the site, different from what you have now, which you have a very central lot. So we've tried to spread that around. There's about 120 more spaces than you currently have. We are moving the stadium. And as we mentioned in some of our cost containment measures, trying to reuse some of the, the stuff there, the lights and the concession stand, the bleachers, and relocate them over here. We're building on top of the tennis court, so we're replacing those. The proposal and the cost estimates include turf inside the track for lacrosse and football and soccer. These fields out here are also proposed to be turf and priced that way right now. One of the big things, while it feels like a, a big site at 80 acres, there's only about half of that is usable. And we're putting, you know, about 1,700 students in, on the site at full build-out. And fields are at, you know, a premium here. So by utilizing these as turf fields, you're going to get a lot more use out of them. So that's, it was an important consideration in the plan. Moving on, this is the Level Zero Plan. And it's kind of, as I mentioned, this is the athletic center down on that lower level. It's a regulation-sized, 1/6 mile track, competition track. There's four courts located inside of that as well as the field events. We have, yes.
I gotta stop a sec. I'm, I'm an indoor track guy.
It's an eighth.
Eighth, sorry.
Thank you.
I'm a sport.
All right, let's proceed.
Okay.
Wait, 200 meters, right?
200 meters.
Okay, good. That's better. Thank you.
Yep. Switch over to meters completely now. Pull-out bleachers for about 1,000 seats. There's also bleachers for spectators and, and players to be able to view the track events. We have locker rooms and bathrooms, athletic trainer's office, team rooms, all located down on this lower level with direct access out to the fields. There's a set of stairs and an elevator in here to be able to negotiate the two different levels. We move up to the next floor. This is at the main level of the rest of the building. When you walk into this, there's an observation deck. You walk down to the bleachers. There's a weight room and movement studio located on this floor, some bathrooms, school store and ticketing booth. There are doors here to be able to lock this off for community events when you're trying to lock down the rest of the school building. This is the first floor plan of the rest of the building. This is the high school entrance right here, separate middle school entrance. So this whole piece right here is high school. This is middle school. They're shared with a shared kitchen in the middle, but they both have their separate dining areas. We're also sharing mechanical equipment between the two of them. And there is a hallway connecting the two that can be determined by administration how much access goes back and forth. Coming in at the high school, this is the administration located right at the front door. This large area here is the dining commons and it's kind of the, the pulse, the heart of this project. It serves as lobby catchment space for the theater as well. This is the high school servering line for food, bathrooms. This is kind of more hands-on technical education. We have a fabrication shop for science, technology, engineering and math located right next to some art flex studios. We have some shop storage in here. This is a coral room and white box studio. There's some ensemble rooms and practice spaces. We've got band room, art classrooms, and there are support spaces as well. Green rooms behind the house of the theater, a large stage. There's a 750-seat theater with an orchestra pit and a balcony, 500 seats on this level. And there's 250 seats above. These main academic wings are three stories. And we've integrated specifically, trying to integrate the curriculum of STEAM. So we have, in this wing on three stories, we have science labs directly integrated with math classrooms and engineering classrooms. This wing, which is also three stories, is language arts and humanities over all three floors. In between these, these kind of wedge shapes, we've talked about quite a bit over the last several months, are extended learning areas where there's opportunities to spill out from classrooms, be supervised, and the kids can do project-based learning and collaborative events out there. That's true on every floor of the high school wing and the same thing within these middle school teams. On the middle school side, middle school administration is right at the front door. This is the nurse's office. This is dining commons and a large heller upstairs. And I'll show you a picture of what that looks like. Both the high school and the middle school have that. These are three houses that are two stories each. So in each two-story wing, we house a grade, two teams. So, you know, you could be sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth grade on two floors in there. The teams are made up of their four-core classrooms. On the corridor side of each of these, we have some of the specials that they go to. So we have health and family and consumer science that can be accessed from within the team or outside the team without having to disturb people. We have special educators are embedded within the teams and have space to be able to do that and do pull-out work with small breakout rooms. On the back of the gymnasium here are art classrooms. We have some, again, technology fabrication areas at the middle school level, band and music and some storage in between. And that kind of rounds out what's happening on the first floor. We move upstairs at the high school. Again, the academic wings are the same. You'll see now this yellow piece, which is the library media center. At the high school, it's actually a two-story media center. So it starts on the second floor and there's more space up on the third floor. They're connected by an internal stair between those two spaces. Guidance is right above the administration and also has a stair to connect right down to the administration. This is the combined programs now of business, career center and big picture programs. Prominent space right at the front of the school, closely in collaboration with where the guidance department is also located. There is no connection between the high school and the middle school on the second floor. It's only down on the lower level. The upstairs of the middle school on the second floor has the multimedia center. Also has a TV studio and time lab programs attached to it. This was the elevated track. And you notice I mentioned, as one of our scope reduction items, we've removed that from the scope of the project and the cost. These are the second floors of each of those team rooms. This is the guidance area is actually located right between the two teams on the second floor, right at the top of the stairs. Third floor is just over at the high school. And again, there's the top floor of the media center. And again, duplication of both the, the STEAM and the language arts and humanities wings. These are works in progress. We were focusing on the outside and the site of the building. Now we're kind of moving into looking at specific areas within. So we're just starting to get our heads wrapped around what these spaces could look at. So this is an early depiction of the middle school dining commons. This is what I refer to as the heller upstairs, where there's really stairs on both sides. And then there's these kind of terraces that you can use for impromptu presentations. Every school we put these in, that's probably the kid's favorite place to actually eat their lunch. They get views of everybody and what's happening. This is actually the library that's looking down into all of this. This is the guidance up here and these are entrances to each of those team wings. This is that same view, but from the top of the heller upstairs, looking back down. And a little bit further on the next slide, we've developed a little bit further on the design. But this is the inside of the physical education and athletic center. This is looking at the top, looking in. There's the 200-meter track. We have four courts in here. They're going to be able to be set up. This first one is a competition wood court. And it'll be the primary court for basketball and volleyball at the high school. We also have on these other courts, which are the multi-surface, or they're the same surface as the finish of the track. But they'll be set up to be able to use basketball or volleyball or pickleball or lots of different uses. volleyball or pickleball or lots of different uses. There's also the ability to roll out turf in this, to be able to have indoor practice space for some of those other sports. And you can see kind of the 1,000-seat bleachers here in foreground. The next one up is a depiction of the new theater. So this is an orchestra pit down here. It's a large stage, much larger than what you have now. 500 seats down at the floor level and 250 seats up the balcony level, fully outfitted with, you know, audio, video, and theatrical and rigging. And all of that's been included in the cost estimate. So that's kind of where we are. We're going to update you guys with some more shots soon that we're working on of the academic wings, so you can get a understanding of what that concept looks like. This is a view from Dorset Street, kind of looking back at the overall building. So here's the middle school. There's that shared kitchen. Here's the high school, high school entrance. These are those three-story academic wings, and here's the athletic center, and obviously the baseball and softball fields out front. This next one is just a close-up of the middle school entry. So this is the north end of the building. Here's the middle school entrance right here, and in the foreground is the parent drop-off loop. There's a gravel wetlands, part of the stormwater treatment system that's kind of integrated into the site design. The next slide is a shot of the high school entrance. So this is the high school entrance coming in. Where all this kind of high glass is, is where that dining commons in, so this is bringing lots of natural light in. There's also a rooftop monitor over the top of that, so it's a high-volume space, lots of natural light. That's kind of a theme overall of this design, is to get lots of natural light into all of these spaces. The next shot is the front entrance of the athletic center. That also has a drop-off area right out in front, has entrance upstairs. It also has an entrance around the corner. You can see a bus in the background here. There's an access road that goes all the way around the site, so buses can move all the way around the site and queue up. I think we have room on the site for 23 buses. And here's that lower-level parking lot. And we've put together a little quick video to fly you guys through, and so you can kind of see what this looks like, and I'll let that run. So that video is up on YouTube now, and it's Google-searchable, and it's also linked on the school's website that was mentioned up there, that I think it might be live now, www.southburlingtonvermontbt schools dot com. There's lots of information up there. Some of our next steps, we have lots of activity coming up. There's an event, just to inform the press of what's been going on, an update on tonight's meeting. We have an energy committee meeting tomorrow evening, discussing kind of the sustainability and performance measures of the building. We're doing drop-in tours at both the middle and high school that Carston and Patrick are hosting on Tuesday and Friday mornings from 7:30 to 8:30, which is a quick presentation and tours of those existing buildings. The South Burlington Business Administration, we're presenting to January 14th next week in the morning, 7:30 to 8:30. We're going into rotary, updating Chamberlain staff. We've been going around, marching around to all of the elementary schools and middle and high school, updating staff on the plans. There'll be some larger forums for the community. There's a scheduled meeting January 30th and another one February 12th over at the high school in CAF II from 7:00 to 9:00. We'll have lots of information and lots of people there to be able to answer questions that folks may have. One of the questions, and I think we got a note from some board members, a question had come up from the community regarding carbon footprint of the building in relation to new construction versus renovation. And this was a slide we actually talked about earlier this summer, so we brought it back just to talk about it again. There's lots of different factors that have gone into the decision-making process up to this point, and not all of it has been focused just on sustainability. Not all of it has been focused just on cost or education. It's all of those factors and trying to find that good point in the process where all of those things kind of melded together to make a project that makes sense. Certainly, it was an aspect that we looked at, and we're certainly aware that the carbon footprint of new construction is much more than in a renovated building. And most of that, what we're talking about, is within the foundations and the steel structure. There's embodied carbon in being able to produce, manufacture, and transport that stuff. You save on some of that if you're reusing structure, but you have to measure that against what the final completed project looks like. And certainly with a blank canvas and new construction, we're designing a highly efficient building, net-zero-ready, versus in a renovation, we can't achieve some of the efficiencies that we can in new construction. So this data that's up here, and some of our assumptions of 20 kilograms of CO2 per square foot for new construction versus 7.5, it's almost three times less the carbon, embodied carbon that's used in a renovation versus new. But when you go through the exercise and pricing that out and matching that up with energy consumption at the end of the project, that's where kind of the rubber meets the road. And what we found in this analysis, and we used a building program size of 365,000 square feet, and that's kind of where we were at the time this was developed. And we looked at it in case one, all-new construction. In case two, and we looked at one of our renovation addition options that we were considering at the time, knowing that the renovation, we included the addition piece as the same as new construction, so it was very efficient, and the inefficiencies of some of that renovation space. What we found out was if the building was designed and was operating in a net-zero capacity, in other words, we're using, we're producing as much energy as we're using within the building, the payback on that carbon footprint change between new and renovation is paid back within 3.3 years because of the efficiencies and the operations of that existing building. So it is an initial, when you look at it, it's certainly less carbon footprint for renovation, but you have to play this out over the long haul. And so we've evaluated that, and we didn't make decisions just solely based on this. As I mentioned, there's lots of different factors that went into this decision-making process. I did want to touch just on our overall sustainability goals. Again, this was a slide from earlier this summer, and these were the goals from the onset that we set up to meet as part of the project. And we wanted a project that was LEED-certifiable, which this project, as designed and priced, will be. We wanted a building that's designed to be net-zero energy-ready, and it will be, and we're actually taking that a step further, and we have money in there for a leased PV system to take some of that load. All of the demolition activities on those existing buildings, we want to recycle, and on our latest projects, we've recycled north of 95% of all of that bulk material and avoided landfills with that. We've said solar-ready is being designed that way, so the infrastructure's in place to be able to add more solar in the future. We're using low-flow plumbing fixtures, a highly efficient, all-electric, fossil-free HVAC system, high-performance building envelope, tight windows, tight detailing, and all of our cost estimates reflected those sustainability goals back over the summer. So our project still meets all of those goals, and a lot of those areas we've exceeded, which is something that we wanted to focus on, and what we could do extra within the budget constraints that we had. So I just wanted to touch back on that, because that was an important piece. This last slide is the discussion of, well, what did we explore during this phase from a sustainability piece to get to net zero? And we decided that we couldn't quite afford to fit within our 209 cap, but if we wanted to get there, we wanted to be able to present to you with what that looked like. And one of the things is, you try and do with a net-zero building at first, is you try and reduce the load of the building, the amount of energy it's using. And so a geothermal, a closed-loop system, does that because we're using ground-sourced water that's at a constant temperature to be able to kind of preheat or precoal some of the water that's coming in that's heating or cooling the building. Doing that reduces the energy consumption, but there's a huge cost initially on the capital outlay of those 130-plus wells that I talked about, and the infrastructure that's involved. So part of our cost containment measures, we took out about $5.8 million worth of that geothermal system. And I just wanted to put it back here so you could see that system, and we ran a lifecycle cost analysis on it, and it pays for that investment of $5.8 million over 20 years. The next piece of, you know, net-zero energy is how much renewable can we produce? So I had mentioned we explored the district owning whole system. That was about $6 million today's pricing under today's current standards. What we have in the project, as I mentioned, was leasing that at 1.7, but if you were to purchase your own system and put that behind the meter with a battery backup system, you have the capability of producing as much power as the building utilizes. So you're basically net-zero energy-producing. You would need battery storage to be able to work that and pull that off and on the grid when you need that. And there's a lot of volatility, as I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, in the solar industry in general and the legislation, you know, that's currently in Vermont. So those are the pricing, the information that we've got from talking to, you know, several of these companies that are providing these services in Vermont, with the caveat that it's all subject to change, probably within the near term. And so we see, and historically have seen, pricing of PV coming down. There's been a shift from, you know, incentivizing the actual panels to now the shift we're seeing more to incentivizing the battery systems. So we want to see how that plays out. There is an option, you know, if the community is interested, to be able to change the project in the future and add this on. The only thing that you really would need to consider now, because this is the time to do it, is when you're in construction, is the geothermal system. And so at this point, and what we presented to you, we haven't included that, but we just wanted to give you this information so you know exactly what it was we took out. And if you wanted to increase the project budget, this is what it is, and this is what the payback looks like. And I'm sure the folks at the Energy Committee will be interested in having this discussion with us tomorrow, but we wanted to give you guys the information as well. So that's where we are on the project update right now, as far as plans and costs and tax impacts.
I think it's important to know that board members are actually seeing this. You're seeing, again, part of the work that's been in play is to get all of the cost estimation in. Everything has been on time. There's been a huge need and desire by the community to be able to see what the impact was. We initially thought about trying to do some back-to-the-mast, and we felt that was a dangerous exercise. And so here we are, really, now at this stage. You now see through the information that's been provided on the impact related to the current forecast needs, as Gary went over.
You have a chart in front of you that has both the income sensitivity piece and then the non. And again, in the spirit of transparency, the board's seeing this for the first time, other than probably Bridgette and Brian like just a few days ago. And so, that said, we also have a ticking time here for making some decisions to move forward in preparation for the March budget period. So we have a special meeting again on the 15th, next Wednesday, and we're at decision time on both the budget and the bond. So again, I think this is a lot of information. We're going to walk into some more information on budget again, but I don't know, this is an opportunity for board members to ask questions to certainly the, Adam, any of us.
So from my standpoint, just briefly, first of all, the campus is breathtaking, seeing that in 3D and the tour of it, and the numbers are breathtaking. I'm, you know, personally, I just want to kind of process it, because like David said the first time, but what are, I also saw the list of, we did get some handouts on the reconciliation. Is there, is there a specific ask from the board in the short timeframe in terms of prioritizing anything, or has the working committee done that already in terms of what's in and what's out? I don't know if my colleagues can answer that, or Lee, if you want to answer it?
Yeah, I think the way we approach that is, because of where we are in the process of the project, through about 30% design and the cost estimates, we developed a scope-reduction list that was comprehensive, and that actually went a little deeper than we needed to be able to leave some conservative flexibility in there. So we didn't ask anyone to make fine decisions on specific scope items at this time, to be able to leave some flexibility, because with anything, as this process evolves, there's multiple pathways to get to that savings. But what we wanted to present is, draw a line in the sand today, here is a pathway to be able to bring this at the budget that we were doing. So we're not looking for a specific direction from you on which of those line items in that comprehensive list of things that you need to choose. We just wanted to be able to show you, you know, we've done that homework. Here's a list that we can identify right today out of the gate to be able to keep and maintain that budget. So as this process develops and the design continues, right, then we're going to be tasked with, you know, the working group and the board making certain decisions, you know, after a bond vote, of what scope items stay in the project and come out.
Just one comment, I mean, I didn't see any surprises here, either, I was hoping for pleasant surprises, but, you know, neither pleasant nor unpleasant surprises. This is probably a little more detailed, the geothermal versus the keeping the buildings ready to go full solar with the batteries and such. I mean, if you're going full solar with the batteries, it seems a little less important to have the geothermal. I mean, because you're providing all the energy for your needs onsite essentially anyway.
It's true, but the difference is, depending on the system that is picked, whether it's a geothermal or the system that we have in the estimate right now, the efficiency of those systems and the amount of energy resource it's going to take to power those systems is different. A geothermal system is more efficient than what we have, really because of, you know, that ground-sourced temperature. So you're, if, on a geothermal system, you need to produce less PV than you would, right? So it's kind of a cyclical thing that goes back and forth.
So were the figures there for the PV, the full build-out and batteries, assuming not having geothermal?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Other board questions or comments?
Yeah, a question. Does this design still have the potential to add a fourth middle school wing? It would have been directly west.
Yes, so what we've been showing you all along and in previous plans where we have the dotted line, clean that up because the presentation's changed a little bit. But yes, both at the high school and the middle school, we've preserved space for future additions, for academic space, for classroom additions. So there is room for, you know, another two-story wing at the middle school, which would be on the front of the building, kind of where the bus loop. You're going to have to rejigger the site when you obviously put some of that stuff into work circulation. But infrastructure in place and the real estate kind of preserved for both adding classrooms at the academic wing of the high school and the middle school.
And we should say that the core spaces, like the cafeteria, the media center, the theater, the gyms, are sized appropriately that if we needed to expand, if we had higher enrollment, that we wouldn't need to expand those spaces.
Any questions for the public? Yes?
Yes, what's the total student body capacity for the middle school and high school?
It's 1,050 students at the high school, and I believe it's 640 students at the middle school.
And for your finance fellow, what is the current debt of South Burlington? And what impact on South Burlington's credit rating would the traditional or the new $200 million loan have?
That's a great question. So South Burlington right now has a couple of small bonds with the Vermont Bond Bank and is paying principal interest through fiscal year '26. So right now, South Burlington has, you know, it goes down a little bit every year. So it goes from about $165,000 down to $134,000 between now and 2026. So obviously, this bond issue, it's yet to be determined if this project is going to go forward. One of the first things on the list is to talk to the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank because we want to determine, obviously, the most efficient way to issue these bonds, whether it's through the bond bank or partially through the bond bank or all of its public. Assuming if some of it goes public, we will actually need to get a credit rating from either Moody's or S&amp;P or Fitch, one of the credit rating agencies. We've started doing that analysis. Obviously, this is a lot more debt than the district currently has. We've already started looking at factors such as the percentage that the district's debt service would be of the budget, the factors that the rating agencies look at. So we've started looking at all of that. We've started comparing the districts to its peers around New England, you know, because obviously we want to know if something's going to be very different than the median of its peers around New England. So we've started that process. Obviously, our goal is to position the district to get the best credit rating possible so that we can issue at the lowest interest rates possible. And that's, you know, since these numbers just came out within the last three days, we're at the very beginning stages. So, you know, just to give you some sense of what we're looking at, that's where we are right now.
So just a follow-up question, for when will we have that information for some of those issues you just mentioned?
So, I mean, our goal is, our goal is to, over the next couple of weeks, to study the medians. I mean, we already have the districts that are rated in New England. We've already, we already have all that data so that we can look at it. So our goal is, our timeframe for this sort of is over the next couple of weeks, and, you know, we'll talk with the working group here to make sure we meet timelines, you know, an actual timeline that's requested. We're looking at that data now so that we can have an idea of where we think the district would fall with those specific metrics over the next couple of weeks. We would need to have a bond rating before the January 2021 bond issue. We don't need it for the short-term bond anticipation note, but unless we go through the bond bank for 100% of the debt, we will need to actually have presented to and received a rating by January 2021. While that seems really far away to put a presentation together and gather all this, it's a lot of work, which is why we've started now, and certainly we'd begin in earnest. You know, we begin the more public process. Everything we're doing now is just background research because we can't make assumptions before March. But after March, certainly, we would hit the ground running with the public parts. And by public parts, I mean, we've got to talk to the city as well, you know, because there's the, the folks that are within the district are also obviously members of the city, or I know you have a couple of outlying areas also. But we have to look at it from a holistic level, and we would want to start doing that, you know, in March or after the budget, you know, once all of this is settled.
Does the interest rate that was modeled in here account for a range of ratings?
Yes, it does, it does, just because that's a huge factor.
So the more debt we have, the higher interest rate we have?
Debt is only one of four major factors with the rating agencies. The rating agencies really, their top line is your ability and willingness to pay. And how they measure that is four major areas. One, you don't have a lot of control over, which is the general regional economy. One is management, which you certainly have control over. One is your budget performance, how you've done in the past. Certainly, they look at trends because they don't want things, you know, spiking up and down. They want to, if they're going to give you a credit rating, they don't want to change it next year because investors will be really mad if it goes down and they, you know, so it's part of it. This is very much done on trend, so we'll be looking back five, seven years for everything. And then the fourth area is your long-term liabilities, which is debt, pension. And I mean, that matters much more in other states. But those long-term liabilities is the fourth area. So it's not just debt, and really, you know, if you're going to have a high debt load or if you're in a depressed area of the country, you know, your other three can bring you up. It's all about making sure you look at all four and how they're going to work together.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Yes, Gary.
So previously I said, can we get an estimate of what you believe the aggregate interest cost is going to be? Or the total principal and interest for this project? If we can't have that figured out, that's okay. Just if we have it, that's great, if we don't have it, that's a good answer too.
Yeah, no, 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 I can tell you, I have pulled out, based on the current estimates, which is what you see here, for all three of those, the total aggregate for the entire project, the total debt service over the entire time period, which is through 2053, is $345.667 million.
That's principal and interest?
Principal and interest.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we just want another follow-up here for the very complicated projections. I just want to clarify, Gary. This would be based upon current assessment of houses in South Burlington. The reason I ask is because the CLA suggested houses in South Burlington are 10% under-valued. So someone would look at this, they'd really have to bump up their house assessment by 10% based upon the CLA to get an idea of where they might fall on this chart. There, Gary, you're right, you want to say the CLA. We're at 89% between 10% under-valued.
Okay, so I'm trying to answer, yes, like your assumption is correct, but you have to also understand that there's a comparable offset to the tax rate that's calculated when that CLA goes back to 100%.
You also don't know what the yield is going to be for the next 30 years. So there are so many moving parts in this. I think the community should understand it's virtually impossible to come up with what's going to happen here. All we can do is make a best approximation. That $340 million is an excellent starting point, it's a ballpark figure. It gives people an understanding of the magnitude of this project.
And I certainly hope I was, excuse me, I certainly hope I was clear that I said that there are a lot of variables to this, and this is our best estimate.
That's fine, as long as people understand how many moving parts there are here, and this is a best projection, then people can make the most informed, intelligent decision possible. Don't go to them and say, everything's going to fall in a place like this, just double that's going to be. And I'll give you an example, the 5,600 cap I told you about, that's non-indexed to inflation. There's no evidence that I can see from the legislature, they're willing to evaluate that every year. So 10 years down the road, you can expect your tax rate or your tax assessment is going to go up. I have no idea what the legislature is going to revisit and say, we have to move that 5,600 cap up because it's not keeping up with tax assessments. Presumably, if the money's there, they'll do that, we don't know. Would you like to comment on that, Martin?
We don't know.
We don't know, right, okay. I just want to say, there's a lot of unknowns here. And if people want to say, that's okay, I'm willing to deal with it, that's fine. Make sure they know there are a lot of unknowns here.
Have we modeled the approximate tax impact of the timing of baseline infrastructure, the sort of 55 million as a baseline, kind of in the same format?
No, and the 55 million, remember, I mean, we did not go into in-depth distribution of when that was going to be done, right? It was, it wasn't identified on the 31. We said we had to do a variety of things, but as far as the bonding and the cycle of that would change the number of years based on our availability to do it, right? Because, I mean, then, I mean, it would elongate the funding outcome.
I just wonder how difficult it would be to look at, I mean, if you look at the life expectancy of some of those major infrastructure projects and assess the timing based on that. We know it's a series of $5 to $10 million bonds for those infrastructure projects. That really should be the baseline off of which anyone would evaluate this as well.
Well, except that one point though, that 55 to 60 million was on a renovation that was not designed to the same level that this has been designed. So if you recall, that was part of the eight options that were presented back in April, so almost a year ago. And the board gave Dorm Whittier instruction to sort of go down a path. They did not parallel-track, you know, that renovation and inspect it out into the same level of detail that they did to get schematic drawings to do a further cost estimate. So the project, the concept five, has had, I think, what, two or three, three different cost estimate layers built in to get to the specificity that we have now. The same would have to be done, if you really wanted a true baseline of what renovations would look like, you would need to do the same level of detail. That was very high-level stuff to help us make a decision as a board about which direction to go. That's all I'll say about that.
And I would just have the question on that, that if anything, I would expect that baseline to be understated without that assessment. So if, if we know that baseline's understated, it's, it would be a more than fair assessment, having not gone through that level of detail to look at sort of a minimum investment the taxpayers would likely be looking at versus what is proposed in this project.
But does that cover 55, it did not address any capacity issues present or future, right?
It was only electrical, mechanical structure, right?
It didn't, it didn't deal with your cafeteria.
It dealt with the middle school gym. I think it did expand the middle school gym, but it did not expand the other, the theater or the cafeterias or any of that other space.
Well, I mean, I'll just offer that to the working team as a possible benchmark as we move this discussion forward.
But I think that's pretty important because if you're looking at a $1,000 increase in your taxes for what we're talking about here, but if we don't do this, you're still looking at $250, or whatever it is, that would be helpful for an individual to understand. You know, the choice really, well, sure, the choice could be to do nothing. People could vote against, you know, doing anything. But presumably, given our history with this community, at a minimum, people are going to support that $55 million cost to bring our buildings up to snuff essentially. So again, I think that's valuable if we can have some approximation that, you know, even if you don't like this, you know, this is what we're facing, just for the things that we know we have to do with the building, you know.
I can certainly see the value of the idea, I just question the level of the baseline. You know, if you're not going to be able to do any better fitting the current kids, let alone the 100 coming over the next decade, is that really the baseline?
Is that really right, right? Well, that's a good point, too. Maybe it has to be kept more general, that.
Well, but there is an option in between, right, that was both renovation and addition to account for those things. As I recall, that was somewhere in the 140s maybe?
In that range, in between them, yeah.
And I think that was with limited educational benefit, right? That was just fix the infrastructure, fit everything in.
I think the three priority items that were given to us, you know, cafeteria size.
Yeah.
I can't remember which three were on the top of my head.
Cafes gym, yeah, right. And that was like a five-year-ish?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, that's the other part of it, is five years in trailers, but... I don't know, yeah. I just want an accurate baseline, that's all I mean.
I'll leave that observation to the working committee.
I think your point is a good one, though, that it's, we're in a situation where it's not, we're not in a do-nothing situation.
Right.
You know, there is a, there's a need to do something. And obviously, what's before the board is this project or concept five. But to lead people in the community that there's either this or a zero, there's not a zero option.
Well, I mean, the advent of this whole project dates back to the assessment of infrastructure, and there was a cost associated with that, that we will likely be coming back. And the question is really more timing and the increments of, is it five, you know, a series of 10, $5 million bonds? Or is it, and actually, the longer it goes out, the likely it will be higher. So I know I looked at that Phase 1 and said it's probably a combination of $5 to $10 million expenditures over a five-year period. And again, I'm not the expert on the timing, but there is a baseline in that tax. Yes, you had a question?
Hi, yes. What's that, what was your name?
Adam.
Adam, I'm sorry. I just got this in the mail today from Deb Billidoo, and she has the updated figure for Vermont's unfunded liabilities, $4.5 billion. Now, taxpayers are also ultimately responsible. And what's troubling on the surface, we've had a 10-year stock rally, and that's the current unfunded liability. It doesn't seem to have been dented much by the stock market performance. So that's something too, that I think the credit rating agencies are going to be looking at. That was one factor you mentioned, wasn't it?
Yep.
The funded liabilities.
Yep, and obviously, directly, that's a good point, because directly, obviously, they're looking at what the district is liable for, but there's always a risk. I mean, we've seen in Connecticut, you know, when the, when the state has some trouble, things flow downhill. So obviously, the risk of what's going on at the state level and how that can impact the local communities and school districts is absolutely a factor. So no, that is a very valid point, and that is definitely part of it.
All right, any other questions? Yes?
Was there any, was one of the plans to keep the high school as it is and use it as a middle school? And just build one building?
No, none of the options included that. There was an option back last spring, we were looking at the eight different options, ranging from renovation to new buildings. There was a potential option to build a new high school and then do some renovations at the middle school. But the high school itself is very challenging because it has a lot of, just a lot of issues that make renovation very difficult and/or expensive, and expensive, I should say. So for example, there are low-bearing walls between each of the classrooms at the high school, which makes it very hard to change the configuration and really expand without great expense.
Right, but the middle school is about...
I'm sorry.
The middle school enrollment is about 60% of the high school. So it would, since the high school is running out of space.
It's bigger than the middle school, I understand what you're saying. The challenge is that the middle school teaching model is very different, and they teach on teams. And the high school is simply not structured to support the middle school teaching model. So we would be fitting the middle school basically into an even less ideal space than it's already in for the middle school and the way that we're currently teaching middle school students.
The infrastructure issues still exist at the high school. You know, we've got all of the issues that were identified as electrical, mechanical, and structural needs. So those don't go away. And again, part of the direction of the board to go concept five, there was consideration around how to reuse the current facilities. And when you look at that, again, based electrical, structural, mechanical, and then look at the distribution period on what do you got to do in order to get it done? Because if you're going to do a renovation, likely, and we know this from our elevator project at the high school, that couldn't, that elevator project took two years to do because of the timeframe to do it. So it was some of those considerations that also need to be considered in that.
All right, so we're going to try, oh, yes, Donna, one more question, please.
Yeah, I just wondered how the electrical transmission line that goes across that portion of the site where the construction is planned, how that's been dealt with in the cost estimates? Because somebody has to pay for that.
It remains there, it doesn't move. It's not, it's a mainline distribution line, and it doesn't move. It's not part of the plan.
So it's going to be over the buildings?
It's not over the building, actually, there's enough of a buffer. It's still, we're well west of the, of the power lines that run north and south.
150 feet away.
All right, in the interest of being less behind schedule, we'll move on to another timely topic. timely topic, agenda item eleven, the presentation of the budget recommended by administration.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Bob.
We're going to welcome Amity up to the table. Amity, Gary, myself are going to walk you through the, the budget and take questions along the way. Again, the last time you saw this was about three weeks ago.
December eighteenth.
So there's been some changes. Obviously, we have some new state data, but all of that state data that we were talking about before, yield is locked, but may change, we don't know. Equalized pupil, we have, but we know it doesn't finalize until the legislature is done. And the common level appraisal we've received, and we're going to articulate that here. So we'll walk you through it. These are just enrollments, and I, I won't spend a ton of time, although for the Rick Marcoth parents, I think, again, this is part of what, what I've been talking about. We've got the here and now, which I talked earlier, but we also see the forecast for the future. Again, this was just updated yesterday on the, on the, on our enrollment, and you have estimates on us going forward. We do, and will continue to use the demographer to say, hey, we're seeing a little bit more of an uptick in the numbers, particularly to focus on some of the more, what we'd say, affordable housing allocation. So does that change our model? Well, right now, we're forecasting a, a pretty good-sized increase of up to three-seventy-nine. In the budget board, we have an additional teacher, so we go from nineteen to twenty, and I, and we have a contingent teacher in here as well. Okay? You got a question?
Yeah, is there a reason why we have a contingent when we have two class sizes in the K through two that are already exceeding twenty, you know, as projected currently with the next year's first grade and second grade, or kindergarten?
So again, it may be that we, that we push that contingent in sooner, and that's part of what we've done in the past. Again, some of those enrollments do fluctuate over the summer, in our Ks particularly. So I would say that our teacher assignment categories are a little bit more movable based on that, but we, we are just trying to be transparent about where we think that will be. Again...
I personally, as a parent of a first grader who went from having four sections last year in kindergarten to three in first grade, that are now exceeding twenty kids in the first grade class, I would personally like to see at least one added and then a contingent. Because if those numbers tweak much higher, that sixty-six is going to become seventy, which happened in my daughter's second grade class this year, and exceeded, and now we're stuck here in the middle of the year trying to find someone to come in and assist those teachers. So I personally think putting at least one more to a fourth as our resource, and whether we put that to a one or two, depending on the numbers as it falls out at the end of the year, having that in there, what's better not to come in under budget, right? Like, I am an auditor. I'm an accountant. I get that. You know, and then if we put a contingency on top of that, that gives us the freedom to allocate that between that, you know, between that one, two class, and keep those class sizes down below the twenty-two, you know, with it below the twenty mark that we really do strive to in that K two section. That's what I would like to see put into that personally, as a Rick Marcoth parent. And taxpayer.
Quick question. David, just, you have the twelve-seventeen update. It looks like you got ten students, so a quick question.
Twelve-seventeen. You mean, one-seven, one-seven?
No, no, no. I'm, I'm going back to the December meeting, that and out. It, it looks like there's ten, ten more students.
Yeah.
Right.
Is that just more students that moved into the district or something like that?
Part of it, it's a new building that's building that door.
I just, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yes, Jerry. Yeah. Yeah. It's, and that's a little bit of anomaly. I mean, we generally don't see that significant of an increase, but, and, and we didn't anticipate that. So, thank you.
Just wanted to understand.
So, moving on, not, not listening, but moving on. Chamberlain, we have an additional teacher here planned. And again, you can see there's some additional students forecasted for Chamberlain as well. Again, I did provide the, what's currently in there, right, around, with the pre-K five. So we're at two-seventy-one, two-forty-seven this year, and then plan next year is the two-sixty-nine, adding an, an additional teacher at Chamberlain. At Orchard, again, we're staying with the twenty-two. We have a contingent teacher forecasted in there, and you can see that we've got some, again, pretty, you know, pretty, we're on the upper limits on some of those. But again, we're hoping, again, with the, with where we are, depending, always the unknown is the, what happens with kindergarten. And this year in the kindergarten, you saw what we had at kindergarten, which was a pretty significant increase over the previous years that we've had. So we're just, right now, we're, we're saying at, at the sixty-nine, we hope we can stay up to twenty-two. We do have a contingent teacher planned there. This is the elementary total. Again, it, it brings you up, we're fifty-three students up overall. And obviously, you've heard some of the feedback related. You see kind of district-wide where we are. Again, that's not the way it feels in an individual classroom, but these are the, kind of the way it breaks out across the district on a student-to-teacher average. Moving on to the middle school. Again, middle schools had a big, big population of students moving on. Next year, to the high school, two-hundred-and-fourteen students moving on. Next year, they're slight downward number from five-seventy to five-thirty-one. And again, so we remain the number there at the same number of teachers in their core teams. The high school, as I said earlier, we see that big jump in the, in the eighth grade, that number coming over. It increases because we had, we had the tuition students forecasted at fifty-one. So that is a large class coming through the, the ranks. And you see the high school increasing from eight-ninety-six to nine-forty-nine proposed. Here's the summary, you know, again, ups and downs. This is not a cohort. This is just looking at, you know, grades and what's happening from current enrollment to anticipated. So you can see where we're at. Plus-sixty-eight, twenty-five-seventy-seven in the district. Here are some recommended additions. I've talked about some of these already. Classroom teacher at Rick Marcoth. Classroom teacher at Chamberlain, based again on these enrollments. Often, you can't just do the classroom. You got to look also at the services. So a point two add, again, that population at Orchard, as you know, is up over the, the four-hundred mark, so point two to guidance. Campus safety, currently, we have four campus safety. Again, obviously, the high school, middle school are a bigger load, and this brings out the opportunity to provide more support at the elementary, so two campus positions. One-point-six core teacher adds at the high school. This is specific to the increased enrollment, that high, high number of students coming into the freshman year. Again, this doesn't mean that it's one-point-six teacher. It would be fractionalized, you know, you know, to support the needs of, of the students signing up for classes. And then a point-one district nurse liaison. We do have a point-one already, but given the increasing needs through the district, with, whether it be immunization, flu, those types of things, being advised and being, being able to be in concert with how we're doing things. Again, I mentioned earlier, the high school having to take on the responsibility, a legislative mandate to do the hearing and sight vision piece at the eleventh and twelfth grade, you know, those were some absorption to figure out how we're going to do that. So that's an add. This is actually providing some additional facilitation at the, at the middle school for their continuation of work in preparing kids to go across the street, across the parking lot currently, around proficiency-based learning. So there's some money there. Athletic supervision, again, these are co-curricular positions, so just some portions of, but given the number of activities that we do, we have an activities director and, and, and administration. But given the number of activities, we do want to have supervision at these, and so it adds a little bit here to, to allow that to happen. Software, this is, again, our human resource software. Again, really important component to, for us to be able to track and utilize the, the data. So this is leasing that program. A rave mobile safety program, again, this is kind of alert notification to be able to provide timely responses and get out information in the event of an emergency. So there's some dollars here around the safety and security component. Our maintenance and stewardship work continues, and obviously, this is not just in the stewardship, but it's also costs that are needed to support our, our ongoing maintenance and facility needs. I don't know, Gary, Amity, anything? I'm, I'm leaving out that's needed so far. You good? This, again, I'll let Amity hit this one for Gary.
This is the continuation of additions in this budget for, there's the pre-bond services line of credit that we had approval to. We would have to repay that in the next fiscal year if the, there is not a positive bond vote. So that is in addition to our current, you know, FY twenty budget. It's above and beyond. And if we have a positive bond vote, then that money actually just becomes a contingency and would be applied to our fund balance. So it's a list of those three pages, or two, that David just covered, plus this one, is the one-point-three-five-eight million in addition to where we stand with our current services. So it's above and beyond what we have in our budget now. That doesn't include the, you know, increases in costs to contracts and salary contingencies and health insurance and things like that. These are new things that we are adding. That's what that total number comes from.
I know you're going to have questions, and we'll be able to go back to these, some of these, but we'll keep moving on unless there's...
Is that just a quick question? Is the, is the pre-bond line of credit paid back as debt service?
It is not, because it's a short term. So it doesn't go under your debt service. It would be like a business office or operations office line item expense, because it is a short-term borrow.
So these are, we, we have made some reductions from the twelve-eighteen presentation that we last shared. And so vocational tuition, actually, we, because we've, we've actually got the figures, there's a slight increase of sixteen. We made a reduction in the, as a result of the phone system. Again, we're moving to the VoIP system, so there'd be some savings there. We've moved, again, this, we have a capital reserve fund of three-hundred-thousand dollars. Again, this is an, this is an important component for board to, to, you know, be okay with. But we have been holding that three-hundred-thousand dollars for several years since the origination. We think this is an important time to deploy that, those resources to account for some of the facility and stewardship needs that we have, so that has the three-hundred-thousand dollars. So we've applied that. And then a reduction in parking lot improvements at the high school and the middle school, and the central athletic field for improvement. So we've made those. So the total reductions from the last one is the three-fourty-five-nine-nine-six. Here is a kind of a roll-up on the budget summary. But on the revenue side, you've got the nine-point-six-six, and you see kind of where we are with both the state ed fund revenue side and then our local revenue side. And then down this side, we have what comes up with our eight-point-eight-one currently increase in the overall expense side. And we're going to see that on our budget worksheet in just a minute. But where that makeup comes from is three-point-two, three-point-four-two percent on the salaries and wages. Health insurance, as you know, this is the, this is the increase by the category seventeen-point-seven-seven, which makes up two percent of the eight-point-eight. And then again, you can see the, the variations beyond that. Okay? Here's the FTEs, again, where we are, what was approved and adopted in the budget, where we are actually now, and then where we are proposing for FY twenty-one. Again, you see the two core teachers. Again, this denotes the FY twenty-one request in the two teachers, the guidance. So you see anywhere there's an asterisk, you see those are new. Here's where positions that we, we did add. And some of these are a result of student-specific need, or students, I'll, I'll say. Campus security, you see LPN. Again, these, this is a student or student-specific need to, to add for, in some cases, medically fragile students that need services. And then district support staff, these were additions as well. So it's eight-point-oh-four over the FY twenty. And then that one-point-six on the high school and the two elementary here are held in contingency currently are added into that. So I'm, again, want to be transparent.
Well, they're not in that total five-hundred, but...
They're not in, but I, you know, we want to be transparent that if they were, it would be three-point-six-zero higher.
So there is no contingency teaching?
Uh, there is, there is contingency. It's just not showing, Aaron, in the, in that bottom line number, FTE number?
But, but we, I mean, to be clear, the budget recommendation is eleven-point-six-four FTEs.
Yeah. If we were to, if we were, if we were to actually, actualize all of that, all that happening, yeah.
I just really think you should really consider adding another full-time teacher. I, the number projected for next year's Rick Marcoth is three-seventy-nine, and starting next week, we're three-seventy-four. And that building on Market Street with sixty units, only twenty-one of them are occupied right now. And with knowing that many of those could be one bedrooms that aren't occupied as of now, but that's a huge flux, and...
We're here, and we, we know there's some volatility there, and we're, we're trying to really figure that out.
We do have a one add at Central already in the budget, and then there's a contingency also.
But when you look back at the K through two next year projected, they're all over sixty. And they're all, K is at four, so that does limit us to below the eighteen. But the one, two, there are already over sixty kids right now, and then with three teachers. And so that started the year at twenty-three pupil per classroom, which is above where we like the K two to be already, knowing that those classes, those classrooms right now are already seeing an influx in those years. And what happened with the second grade, I just really think it's important that we strategize and put it in the budget now and get it approved versus having to go back and make budget modifications later. You know, I just think that's just prudent to, what we deem to be the appropriate class sizes in our educational model.
Or redistrict. Send some to Chamberlain.
And, you know, that, there's some of the children coming in are requiring more discipline needs and things like that, that are taking time away from the other kids in the classroom. And by having larger class sizes, it is limiting that learning ability right now, too. So even though they may not have pairs and they may not be on special education programs, there is distractions. And, you know, and I think we're seeing that already from what's happened even the last six weeks within Rick Marcoth School. And I just think, again, that's something to be considered in that next year's teaching position.
Thank you. So this is hard, this is hard to see, I think, for folks even on the, on the larger screen. Here's the eight-point-eight-one percent increase on the expenditure side. Again, we have a reduction in our revenue projections. And again, we can talk to you more about what those revenues are. We're trying to be appropriate, yet conservative. And you can see then, this is our net spending, net ed funding spending, which is up at the twelve-point-three-nine. Our equalized pupils are up. Even though we have more than seventy student additions, remember, it's a two-year rolling average, and you can't, you're only going to see half of whatever your add is. Again, that's not pure, because it's not always one-point-oh either, but that's why it only happens on a two-year cycle. So you have thirty-five additional, even though we have more than that. Net, and it's been per equalized pupil is the seventeen-six-four-eight, up that percent. And again, tax rate right now is at twelve-point-five-zero. Major driver of this, and we can articulate this and turn this sheet on for you, but property yield, as we know, is on. We've, we've received that. We've also received the CLA, although we know that that can change and that, but...
Not the CLA.
Or not the CLA, on the, the...
The yield can change.
The yield and equalized could possibly change. And we've had both of those do that, as I said, into April. But if you change the, our, just to highlight the effect on the CLA, again, because we, I'm just going to say, because we do a, I'm going to say, reasonable job in education, we have people that want to move here. Their houses are selling better than the appraised value, right? We're not in the real estate business. But as a result of that action, houses have been selling far above their appraised value, which pushes us into reappraisal, and that number comes in at a pretty significant drop. So if we, and we can do this, we can just bring it back to the, to the previous one, and you can see what the tax rate does to highlight kind of the impact on, you know, on our, on the tax rate. So again, that, it drops it, you know, from the twelve to the, to the eight. So again, you, and it just, it just provides you with some clarity into volatility on a one-year, on a, on a year... So again, you, and it just, it just provides you with some clarity in the volatility on a one-year, on a, on a year-over-year basis. And again, I, I said this to some of the board members before, our equalized pupils, although we have more students, we can't capture the full amount. It's a two-year rolling average.
So the, that number you just put up, Gary, that's the current CLA?
Yeah.
Or not current, the previous.
That was FY20.
So that, the new CLA adds 4% to the residential tax rate.
4.05.
4.05. And then if you put the, if you added the full equalized pupils at the 68 or whatever, whatever that, no, that actually was full time, I guess. But if you.
Yeah, well, if you just doubled that, which, you know, just take some of the same assumptions that, that got you to the 35, yeah.
So could you fully explain the purpose of the CLA and why and how it works? I've had it explained to me, I think, at least annually, but I'd like to, if we could just.
Let me just clarify this, Mark, because Gary just did it. But there's an incremental, by not accounting for the two-year rolling average on equalized pupils, accounts for about an additional 3% of tax rate that we're absorbing without the expense.
This would be one and a half.
Actually, I'm.
She wanted to change.
The CLA too.
Oh, change the CLA.
If it's CLA and bring our equalized pupils to full recognition.
You forgot, you put the decimal point. That'd be great.
Oh, so it actually would reduce, if we, if we were able to account for the students on, in the actual year versus the rolling, it would reduce the residential tax rate by?
Five and a half percent.
How much?
Well, between CLA and the equalized pupil, it would be five and a half percent.
So one, one and a half basically is the equalized pupil for approximately is the CLA.
Correct.
So anyway, I'm, I'm highlighting, and we've done this for board before, the volatility of that, I understand. So the CLA, I'm not a CLA expert, but what we know is that when homes are selling at their appraised value, if perfectly at their appraised value, that would be a one, a one, 1% or 100%.
100%.
100%. When they sell above their appraised value, right? Then somebody's got to make up that difference. The common level of appraisal drops because they're not selling at 100% of the appraised value. They're selling above, which means the percent goes down. And therefore, they're not going to pay that tax. We're going to have to make up that tax difference. I don't think I'm explaining it great.
My understanding.
So they're getting, they're paying, they're paying the tax based on the appraised value, not the actual sales value.
Correct.
Right.
So what this does, Martin, my understanding is that equalizes, no matter what each town across the state is, no matter what their cycle of reappraisal is, right? This takes actual home sales and levels that, common level of appraisal across the state to, to make the tax rates, no matter when your town has appraised fair.
So it's a function of the way that we are funding this at the statewide level?
Correct.
And that recalibration happens how frequently?
Depends on when it drops. If it, if it drops, I think, if it goes below nine, five percentage points, I think it enters into reappraisal.
I think it is. I would have to look that up, but there is a trigger.
We're in it now.
Based on the legislation that, that requires it.
Jerry's.
Just to be sure, Martin, how much your education tax assessment is determined by two factors? Tax rate times the assessed value. It's across the entire state. If the assessed value of your home is $300,000 and its real value is $330,000, we're under, we're undervaluing, undervaluing the value of your house. So the state has to compensate for that. So you're paying a premium on the under-assessed value. It's across the state. It's a reasonable thing to do.
Right, right. Because of the way we're funding it across the state is the point I wanted to have that understood. Thanks.
But it, it should only happen once. Once you get a big hit. You shouldn't have a big hit the next year.
So these are the factors that are in front of you. What we're in control of, and I'm wanting to be crystal clear with you, my responsibility to you is on this line, right? That 8.81% increase, part of this increase, as I've said earlier, is related to staff, which is related to enrollment. In addition, we're also trying to do some things here related to safety and security and some of those important student-related services. So that's where we are currently. I know we have a couple more. Again, I, I want to make sure that you, you see that slide, actually, the, the real version one. But here are those factors, and we've been consistent about this with our community based on assessed values of the property. So when, can you just go back to that worksheet for me? So we've done it on the 100,000, the average condo and the average home, and so you see the impact on that. And income sensitivity, we provided a whole lot more knowledge about income sensitivity on the bond cost chart. But again, you can see how that's also affected. Okay, sorry, you're being long here.
Just before we get into this, do we have the chart that the board had asked for that really graphed staffing versus enrollment?
I do not have that here, no. I do not.
I still think that would be helpful information.
Okay. This, this just shows a little bit of how we get to the 12.50 tax rate increase. What's related to the budget expense, any reduction in the revenue, net increases in equalized pupil. What that does actually, that's a help to that. Increased property yield, slight increases to help the reduction in the property, the common level appraisal, and we already kind of did this math earlier. So that's that. Similar chart that we've had before, I think sometimes we have gone around the fence on whether this is helpful or confusing. But what makes up the property tax is these, these variables around, around this property tax bubble. Obviously, common level appraisal, which we just talked about, it's down by 3.6%. Remember, these percentages don't add up to come to the 12.5. They're independent variables. The yield is up 2.21. Our estimated revenues are down 0.11. The proposed expenditures, again, 8.81 that we've highlighted. Equalized pupils, again, are up 1.39, again, based on just what we can account for. Those all added in, all factor into the 12.50% tax rate.
What we saw in December was, what, 9. something?
48.
Nine, yeah.
Right.
Right, prior to CLA.
Yeah, CLA didn't move. We kept the CLA constant.
Well, we didn't have CLA or equalized pupil at that point.
We kept it constant. We kept the CLA.
Sorry, what was the number again? 9.48 or 9.5, say? So, but you've indicated the CLA is adding four points to that.
Where we had our equalized pupil go up.
Right.
Okay, so that was an offset, okay.
I mean, that, we, we kept those variables the same as, we didn't, we didn't make any assumptions on those, yeah.
Can I just clarify one thing? The bond, if it passes, we won't see any aspect of the funding of the bond on the tax assessment until 2021. Is that correct?
That's right.
2022.
So nothing is happening this year even if it's passed, because we haven't borrowed the money.
Say nothing because we have, we have.
Oh, the 350,000.
The 350,000 we have to repay.
But we would see the first impact in FY2021.
22.
22, 21, 22.
With the, with the short term.
Construction planning, okay, okay, fine.
So this, again, Gary, you can walk through this.
Yeah, this is the tax rate formula that we've used before. It, basically, the, the roadmap to how the tax rate is calculated. So again, we, we, there is a chance, because equalized pupils are not frozen yet. We could get a, we would assume a minor increase in equalized pupils. Not super impactful probably at this point. Shows our education spending, the yield number, the equalized tax rate to be prorated. And then that is, you know, we take that common level of appraisal, we apply that and come up with our actual homestead tax rate of $1.80.34, .034 cents.
Some questions have been asked about our excess spending threshold, and so we've indicated that here. You'll see that we do not hit that.
Do you remember, Andy, Gary, the, the chart that we usually see at budget time about previous years' tax increases and decreases? Just to see where.
Where we are in comparison. We haven't, we haven't pulled that one. We did that.
Are you asking about our district in itself or district to other districts?
Our district in itself. We usually see that 10-year history of, of tax increases and decreases.
I have it. I didn't include it in here, but we can add that too.
But both would be good, once other communities.
Yeah, typically.
It's hard to get other communities. I mean, I did try to do some research today even and, you know, it, nobody has their, their data up on the web and that's usually where you can go to get it easily. I can make phone calls. I'm going to see all my constituents on Friday at Vasbo, so I'll be asking at that point too, so I can probably get a better, more accurate account than what I can find on the web right now.
No, because, I mean, this was a concern we've talked about over the last couple of years because our taxes have been essentially flat for four years. But we've had that caveat, as we've talked about it over those four years, that that was really through changes in yield and CLA and equalized pupils and that it tends to be flat or down for a couple of years. And then state-level factors correct it in an unpleasant way. And that's what we're up against this year, in addition to increases in healthcare and salaries in our contracts. And staffing, because we're sort of having to staff up before the, before we really get credit for it in equalized pupils.
I, I think it's good. I mean, we, we definitely, that was helpful, our looking at our history of our tax rate increases. We do, I anticipate that the board will have a little bit of a request between now and the 13th. No.
15th during our meeting, yeah.
15th on what we can do. I want to be clear that I don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of leeway here based on some of our enrollments, but we do think that we can make some movement in some areas. And we, we have some time carved out tomorrow to work on that. But there may be some additional direction from you folks now, again.
One question I have, David, and I don't have a specific area to, to look at, but one thing we've talked about in previous years is that we tend to see additions. There doesn't usually seem to be sort of a reduction in things that maybe aren't working or things that, you know, we maybe don't need as many resources. So it sort of tends to go in one direction. So I was wondering if there's been any assessment of any of the pilot programs or, you know, anything that's kind of going on in the background that, you know, we've, we've approved increases in previous years and whether there are any of those that are maybe not working as well as they should and, and should maybe be taken out.
Yeah, so right now, I mean, I would just say that we have, we've made some movements and changes in, in what people are doing. We've been working hard on our curricular implementation. And part of that has been that we've needed to, you know, keep staff or reassign them to, to continue to do the, the work that we need to do. And so we're, we've not been able to make reductions. We, I think, have been able to hold the line, given some pretty heavy lifts by the state and by the requirements. I'll, I'll speak to, you know, some of the things on proficiency-based learning. I mean, we've been doing a lot of that work ourselves to try to make ourselves ready for that. We've responded to safety and security issues, so those are things that, you know, are kind of critically important to making sure we're functioning well, but we've not been made, we've not made the reductions. Unless I'm, I'm missing something, we haven't made reductions. We are one of the few districts that are seeing a pretty significant uptick in enrollment. And with enrollment comes sometimes some challenges, some, you know, some challenges to ensure that we're meeting the needs of students. And so we haven't, we haven't been able to do that. We have had some pilots. We have used that data. Again, I think I'm a little remiss in not giving that information back to the board when we were talking about trauma and trauma-informed practices. We've embedded that into our MTSS, our multi-layered system. And so that was an important component that has fed us into everyone becoming more aware of the varied levels of, of support that are needed. We've made some changes in, in our model. We wanted to make sure that we had special education staff onsite. We made some reductions last year in the, in the, in the support staff area and put a little bit more focus on the special ed. That's probably our biggest reduction. And, you know, that's not easy because now we're also recognizing we need some support, you know, for, for our teachers sometimes too. So we're, we're battling kind of the, to move forward instructionally sound, but also how we accommodate for increased growth, you know? So, I mean, it's.
Is it possible on this chart to indicate the contribution that does get to the 12.5? Like, it might be a, a number in parentheses under these. I know this is the change in each of those components. Is, is it possible to indicate what contribution it's making to the overall property tax rate?
So on slide number 16, we kind of went through that really quickly. I'm not sure if this is sort of what the information you're looking for.
Well, it's, it, it may be. By way of example, if you look at equalized pupils, it indicates it's up 1.39, but the contribution is 1.55 to the 12.5.
To the overall tax rate increase, yes. It's actually bringing it down because it, the equalized pupil numbers have gone up, so it brings down tax rate by 1.55% or.
Yeah, I mean, it might be helpful because I think people look for it to.
On the bubble?
To equal that and it doesn't.
Yeah, we've had some conversations. I like this particular chart because it does show you in a visual way what's feeding it. But we've gone, I, I've talked today about trying to have some sort of a pie chart that adds to the fraction and it was more complicated than appropriate, but we can, we can work on that. Jerry has another.
Just looking at the increase in the dollar amount, it's up about 4.5 million. It's a big number, you know. Every time I hear something like 8%, I always think of Fed Chairman Powell saying, "It's tough getting inflation up to 2%." I wish they'd come here and hold their meetings. Because these numbers seem to go up a good bit and, you know, what's it going to be next year? So no matter if the equalized pupil goes down or goes up or the CLA comes down, you keep spending 5 million, 6 million, it's going to add up over time. Just the way it is.
Yeah, there's some of us in the room that have been doing this for a while, education funding and budgets and the variability that exists. We own expenditure increases, but we also have to comply with a lot of the regulations and requirements. And so, and, and facilities that are not factored out of our, our general expenditure line to assume that cost piece. And so it's, it's always, it's been a, it's always been a challenge, but so noted. Again, we're in control of the, the 4 million. We have some ideas. But I want to stop there and receive feedback from, from you folks on where you're at. Because again, we have, next Wednesday, a week from today, we have two things in front of us on bond and budget because we're at, we're at time. And then we're in front of the city, the steering committee on the 22nd and another bond.
The final budget doesn't have to be approved till the 20?
21st.
First.
Yeah, so we would have to find a set, a special meeting. Our next meeting is the 22nd, but we're too late for the period. Yeah. So we really, I mean, whatever you need us to do, up to including a special meeting, I get that. I'm looking for some direction and.
Well, I, I mean, I definitely want to see the staffing and enrollment trends. The purchased property services up here, that's going up half a million. What's included in that?
That's, the majority of that is the facility stewardship adds to the budget because the.
But there was a net decrease using the 300.
It would have been up 300.
But it would have been up 300 more because we've taken those out of the general fund to put them into the capital reserve. So it would have been 800 in that line.
Gary went over this, right? Roofs.
The biggest is.
Elementary.
An important thing to keep in mind with the increase is that for the past two budget cycles, we've used $950,000. cycles, we've used $950,000 worth of bonded, not operating budget.
The past two cycles?
Well, we, we had a bond two years ago.
Mm-hmm.
The last, and, and that is paid for, it's offset the things that we've had in the stewardship plan. So that bond has been used to pay for things that, we don't have a bond this year for stewardship items, so-
But it covered, that 950 covered what period of time?
It covered fiscal year 8, 19, and even some of the current year, we're finished, we just finished up using the bond, so we didn't have to put as much in the FY '20 budget for facilities and the stewardship.
Yeah, I was trying to, I mean, my recollection was about a half a million per year, and I know the bond was sort of a catch-up.
Yeah.
So is, I guess-
There are just some major projects in here that happened to be in a particular year, so these roof projects are extremely expensive, and I guess my question is-
This was the facilities stewardship.
Had those been rescheduled previously? Like, had those been rescheduled to now, all fall together in this year? Because my recollection in previous years of looking at the stewardship plan is that things were sort of scheduled in a way that there weren't three roof projects in a year, there weren't three boilers in a year. It was more that, you know, it was more of a, not a steady state, but it was a smoother, you know, expectation of what Elizabeth's saying, like half a million, maybe a little bit more than that in a given year, up to a million if we were doing another, you know, another significant project. But I was just surprised to see all three roofs, you know?
There are phases of all three roofs that actually started last year at Orchard, out of some bond funding, and now the next phase for that roof and the other two were scheduled, like, I can't tell you when they were initially scheduled, but they, they weren't done when I got here, and there's certainly a need for, for all three of those phase ones.
I mean, I think that, you know, again, our stewardship plan was created to be a, first, an identifier of what were the critical things that were needing to be monitored, one, and then what conditions were they in, what warranties did they have, and then to have that plan begin. But when we first put that plan together, there was a whole lot of things that were front loaded, like, need to be done now. And so what we started to do, and was with some of you around this table support, we started to put them into schedules. Can we make this last, will it last another year, four years, five years? We started to do that, because we wanted to see you guys. We wanted to make sure that that could be doable, and we've continued to do that even as much as this year, there were some decisions between Gary and Bart, that was like, can we, can we put that off one more year? And we're trying to make diligent decisions around the high school and the middle school in the event that we move forward, that we don't put sizable amounts of money into the high school and the middle school, that will be for naught. But at the same time, we gotta have them running and be reliable, you know, until such time that we, we know, you know? So, anyway, the stewardship piece is, you know, we have continued to, what am I gonna say, re, you know, reschedule, recalibrate, we've dumped some of those things out of there. We do think it's prudent at this point, given where we are with budget to use the 300 capital reserve, given kind of where we, where we are financially. But that's, again, your call. Again, giving us some direction now, I think would be, would be helpful, and we're certainly hearing about some additional information that will help you.
We can go back to history and, you know, the older stewardship plans too, to see if any of these big roofs. The one thing that comes to mind for the roofs is that those three schools were all renovated at the same time, and so I think those roofs are all running out of their warranty, and instead of the full roof project, we're doing them in that phasing, so it's only one section of however many at each school. So I have a feeling the roofs were not pushed off, because we usually don't want to do that, but I would go back to, you know, the older stewardship plans to just follow those projects to see if that came-
Yeah, and I guess the question is really, like, what condition they are in, you know, right now, and are we experiencing problems with them, or are we on the verge of experiencing-
Who we are.
Yeah, we are.
I know Rick Markham, the student student, he's leaking. Yes, yeah, I totally, I just don't, I just don't have eyes on the other two schools.
And we have a roofing company that evaluates them for us each year, so that we, that helps to inform the stewardship plan too. So I know that those have not been just added in at a certain timeframe, but they also have that evaluation that we could, you know, probably even Bart has record of all those evaluations to know.
Okay, I think I hear some general direction, and I don't know if there's any other thoughts, ideas.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item 12, the school board line item program budget.
Oh my god, oh my goodness. Thank you, Jerry. So I think at your place, you had a printout of your line item budget. It's basically a little less than level funded, little shifting of funds around, but coming in kind of right where you were at currently, yes.
So what we used for purchases or services?
Yeah, so down at the bottom, below the word grand total, I have a list of what's in that, so the RETN fees for the year, a subscription to the database for the School Boards Association, and Stone Environmental, the work that was done on Market Street. Those were the historical spendings. Now, Stone wasn't prior to FY '19, but that's-
So we just, when I look at the actual, it's at 1,400.
Yeah, that's all you spent.
We just haven't spent all what we know we're gonna have to spend?
Right, that, that one bill was Stone Environmental for the FY '20 year. So far, there's not any other expenses that have come in. I don't, I guess we haven't received an RETN bill yet, and, or the VSBA subscription piece.
And you've got the updated VSBA dues in there?
I level funded from this because I did not actually see the written document this year for-
Out now.
Oh, it is, okay, so I haven't adjusted for that?
I think it's going up.
I think this is the third year of an increase, so we should include that.
It is, okay. Okay. And perhaps the 7,000 that's in purchase service, we probably are not likely to spend much more with Stone because that, that particular issue. And I think if I went back beyond, or prior to FY '19, I could look to see if that amount of money was, you folks never expend all that, tends to be in there, we have a little bit of leeway, so I may be able to just shift from one line to the other too, if I can inform you of that.
So, do we need the 3,000 for professional development, since we don't seem to ever use that?
I'm surprised that that's actually zero, because I know, not, we don't do a lot, but I know that we do, you know, here and there, take a VSBA training.
I think that that's, isn't that covered, or no?
That picks up somewhere else.
It should be in here.
Should be in here, I mean, I don't-
So for example, I'm doing this one on January 24th, this whole day-long training that we talked about in our last meeting. Those kinds of things, would those fall into professional development?
If they're done through VSBA, they should be coming, they should be in here, for you guys.
Under professional development.
Yep, but I don't, there's some things that we, that you will go to that are not paid out of-
And we have talked about some policy governance training too, so.
So keep it?
Keep it.
I was looking for places to cut, so we could say that we cut. Come on, you gotta show them how it's done.
I think we can understand.
And historically, you do.
So I think, I mean, level funding is pretty reasonable.
Reasonable.
Do we need action on that?
Um, yes, I do.
Yeah, I have it in there.
Yes, I do believe you have to take action.
Do I have, with the modifications we talked about, do I have, including VSBA dues, and, I was checking the Stone Environmental?
Modification, do you?
DSBA dues.
The dues, right.
And, looking at the run rate on professional services for Stone, so maybe reducing those? Do I have a motion to approve the budget as recommended?
So good.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, approved. So we'll move on to agenda, item 13, the public high school choice capacity.
So this is the high school, we're required under the capacity to make this, again, the recommendation's consistent with what we've done in the past, is to set your school choice cap to be set at one, go through a process of a lottery, we do comply with it, we've done this in the past. I don't particularly like this, but I feel like it's, as I said here, where money doesn't follow the student, I'm not a big proponent. I feel like back when we had Act 129, prior to Act 129, we had agreements where students could come and go, was a much more appropriate piece. I've said that various times.
I move that we adopt the superintendent's recommendation regarding the school choice capacity of, was it one student?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to announced tuition rates for FY 2021.
So, the announced tuition rate, it's not, we don't, we can't arbitrarily just come up with that, so it's based on a whole litany of factors. If you wanted to see those, we can provide those, but obviously, there's a requirement for us to have this done on or before, by statute, on or before-
15.
15th of January.
We have to notify districts that send their students to us on January 15th, so unfortunately, the next meeting doesn't happen until 7:00 PM on January 15th, so.
So this is currently based on our current budget, but we also have our colleagues that are sending students to us, they need to make decisions on their budgets too. That's why the date is set that way. So this is what we're recommending currently. Obviously, if we make an adjustment to our budget on a going-forward basis, then these would self-correct, because this is currently announced, and then we can, allowable, when allowable comes out, that's where we can recapture if it's, if it's different, or keep it the same. So.
So aren't, aren't some of the other variables that we need for our budget dictated by state statute in terms of being available to us in preparation of our budgets?
Right, those are the ones that we've talked about already, the ones that we've-
So we seem to be going overboard to adhere to statute.
Well, we try to follow the requirements and the laws, and we ask the state to do too.
And I would be having to report policy violation, so I understand what you're saying, because I have that very same frustration, that there's no-
Just pointing out the irony.
I do feel that same irony.
If the direction is to violate your policy, we can do that.
I'm just wondering where the state comes in with a similar policy governance.
Yes, because one of the, the big, you know, things that we tend to like to refer to when we build our announced tuition is that we know what the prior year's allowable tuition rate is, and we still have not received that, and that by statute was supposed to be to us by November 15th, so, yeah.
So we're still waiting for November 15th?
It didn't come to us until April for 2018, it didn't come to us till April of 19, so things are coming along.
So are we, I mean, are we, a serious question, are we at risk in announcing the tuition rate recommendation?
So I will tell you that I have built in a bit of a reduction in, you know, because you build your tuition rate based on your FY '21 budget, so I have built in a reduction amount, assuming that we might reduce what we would be overall expending, so that 8.81% increase that we are asking for, I have built in a bit of a reduction to be on the conservative side, knowing that if we are too conservative, we still do have the opportunity with the allowable, when the state gives us an allowable figure, that we can bill a district if it's a difference of over 3%. So, there is always a risk, because we don't have finalized numbers.
So how do these recommended tuition rates compare to last year?
They're, they're-
Higher.
Higher, so the, the secondary rate is 1,585 higher than the FY '20 rate, and the elementary is, sorry, that is not in this memo. We historically don't bill for elementary, we don't have elementary, this year we have one, and I think that rate is not quite the $1,500 that the high school is, because the, the elementary enrollment numbers are higher than the high school lost more students in the current year. We base our tuition numbers on our announced tuition, on our current enrollment, just to be on a known factor side, so.
I mean, I think this is, I mean, we're kind of bracketing appropriately. I think we're safe to go here, again, as Amy said, if we need to, and it's a correction, we'll see it and show up in allowable. I do want to be respectful to the folks that would be sending and get out at least a rate that they can appropriately plan on without providing a estimate.
So, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the tuition rate recommendation of the superintendent for the secondary grades seven to 12 of $16,905 per student, and for the elementary grades K through six of $15,778 per student.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
So, so some of the attending districts and their cities like Colchester, Essex, how are their increases, or do we have any data?
Don't know, yeah.
No, because they don't have to announce until the 15th, and 99% of the time, we don't know that until the 15th.
So is there any concern that they may decide to go somewhere else because of the attending city?
Sure, sure, they're, usually the students are not the deciders, usually the, the dollar isn't the decider, it's the student, the parent, the guardian who are talking about the right fit, my experience.
Mine too.
Yeah.
As a sending district.
Thank you for sending your students.
All right, we'll move on to item 15, negotiations update. We have the first session of negotiations with the SBA scheduled for the 13th at 3:30, I believe, so that will be kicking that off. Anything else on negotiations? Agenda item 16, other paper articles?
I thought we had changed it last time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the one due at the end of this month, I believe, is no longer Martin, but me, on taxpayer impact for the February 6th issue.
And you guys did see that awesome advertisement in the paper. People have been rushing to get petitions, I'm sure.
I'm sorry that Delaney didn't stay, but one thing I might want to consider adding would be to have a student article on mental health awareness at some point, it may be appropriate.
That's a great idea.
So, in her absence, we'll get her in.
You nominate her. Don't leave her.
She'll really get it. She'll pull another one too.
Yeah.
All right, seeing nothing else there, we'll move on to setting the agenda for the January 15th meeting.
Again, it's primarily focused on bond and budget.
All right, and for the January 22nd meeting?
So this, where we're gonna add back in under my, under the superintendent's report for professional development days. That would just be a bullet item.
All right, seeing nothing else there, we'll move on to agenda item 18, future agenda items. This list is getting long. So maybe just ask that, once we get through the budget approval, that we start getting some dates on those. Anything else there? All right, agenda item 19, consider the minutes of the December 16th meeting. Any changes or comments? Seeing none, those are approved, and the minutes of the December 18th meeting?
I mean, little stuff that doesn't matter, we don't care about, do we?
If, if there's minor things, if you want to just jot them down, we can send them through, Delaney?
I will do that.
All right, with, with those modifications, assuming you don't change major commentary?
They do not change the tone or anything else, no.
Those will be approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'll just quickly highlight Chuck Sol, you know, I think was wanting to be timely in letting people know, he's a longtime guidance counselor, he's obviously fully engaged and working hard for the remainder of the year, but wanted to let folks know that his intentions to- that his intention's to, to retire. And so, again, he's been with us a long time. He had time at CVU, but he's spent a lot of years with us recently and done good work. A very thoughtful, caring counselor. So, on your behalf, I'll send him something.
We'll reluctantly accept his resignation and thank him for his service. Agenda Item 21, any questions on AP Order 24? Seeing none. Agenda Item 22, Request for an AP Order Check to Essex Westford Community Educational Center in the amount of $75,729.75.
I move that we approve the Accounts Payable Order Check to Essex Westford in the amount of $75,729.75.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned. We've got a few signatures here.